Okay, I will call a meeting to order for October 7th, 2019 if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I have a resolution for the transfer of funds. Transferring forty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents from the road fund to the special highway improvement. And then attached to that, I'll give you that for a bit. Oh, the check was, why did they do that? The state made the check out to the noxious weed?
No, they do that. It's the bridge ones.
Why would they do that? That's so weird. So, there's the copy of the check. Do you want to just go ahead and approve it?
Yeah, do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the the Resolution 2019-15, transfer of funds from the, uh, to transfer forty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents from the road fund to the special highway improvement fund.
I'll second. Are there any questions?
Uh, I just have a question. I'm not, no contesting. I just, uh... This is for chip seal and this is, uh, we haven't in that fund, so that's not in our normal highway department fund, is that right? So, we need to do this transfer just to pay for it? Is that normal procedure to do this?
Well, I don't understand what the amount is for personally.
For chip seal. I suppose that's what it costs.
It's the same dollar amount as that check.
It's a dollar amount.
I know, but why is the Department of Administration to Treasurer of the State giving us a check?
That's that contract that you guys signed that said you would exchange your, your federal funds exchange for your bridge money.
Oh.
Okay, that's why. So, that's a normal process we do doing this, like every year, doing something like this from the state to for chip seal. That's all. I just wanted to know the process of what we're doing. Okay, very good.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Motion carries. We are missing Mr. Gabriel today. He's not coming in.
Alexis will need to sign it.
Can you grab me a pen, please? Thank you.
I'll get you one now.
Okay, Cummins.
This is the company that we have our contract with to do the maintenance on the generator up at the nursing home. And it's basically, unfortunately, we've made the difficult business decision to cease operations at the Cummins Sales and Service Facility in Colby, Kansas. So, maybe that's where they were coming from for ours. So, now it'll be the options of Garden City, Kansas City, Kearney, or Denver. So, I suppose, how far is Garden City?
Quite a ways. South, by Dodge City, southwestern Kansas.
Farther than Kansas City.
Kansas City, it may be about same. Probably probably two hundred miles either way.
Apparently, they don't, they won't have an office in Colby anymore, which is where they were coming from. I hope that doesn't affect our...
Do we have to approve us something now?
We have a contract with them that was a locked-in rate, I believe, for two years, maybe three. I don't think we have to approve anything. It's just a notice.
We don't have to respond to this for anything, huh?
No. Okay, so then I have the...
They're just informing us of this.
Last year, I was sent last year's and the new, um...
We could go from Hayes, Dunham's, uh, to...
Oh, sorry, I didn't read far enough.
Well, they're the certified dealers. I don't know if we need to call them or if we're still Cummings.
They need to just make it on their contract, so...
Do they want us to select one or do they do it?
I don't think so. I think it's just a notification that we were doing business there and I don't know if any of these do what they were doing. They were running the...
That big generator, generator, right.
It's like a semi-annual, test, annual...
Well, I think they service it too. I think they change the oil and stuff like that too.
Yes. "We, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, support Lincoln County General Public Transportation Bus Board and their endeavor to support all residents of Lincoln County." "The Lincoln County General Public Transportation Bus is the only form of general public transportation that service that our community has and is a vital asset to the members of the public that are served by the bus, which include the utterly disabled and those with no other means of transportation. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will ensure that twenty thousand dollars in matching funds is made available to meet any operational needs that should arise in the future." Um, we did budget for the twenty thousand, which was the same as the year prior, but we had talked about the function of the bus board and how there's really little communication between that board and our board. Then we have an employee of that board that technically is a county employee who should be our employee as a department head. So, I think we do need to...
We, we talked about getting rid of that board, didn't we?
Yeah, and yeah. Not to say in those terms, but yes.
Not that they're bad people, it's just that they were not effective. It wasn't like they were...
Well, there's a, there's a huge communication breakdown because the bus board is not effectively doing their own budget. They're having their quote-unquote employee do it, but they're not, he's not really their employee because they do not do any of the paperwork. We're, we're financially doing everything for that entity.
And he reports to us and we fund it. So, really, I, I mean, maybe they can oversee.
Maybe let's have a meeting with them.
Let's have a meeting with them, see where their opinion is on what to do about with them because we, we have, yeah, we have the responsibility here to fund them.
Dawn, do you happen to know when their next meeting is?
I believe it was today.
Oh, at nine. Shoot. Who's the president?
We had Anna Marie Wallin, I think she was.
Do you have contact information for her, Dawn?
Not yet.
I think we just need to have them come to a commission meeting.
And find out what we want to do with them, what they want to do and...
What they're in the middle of doing, what they need to finish, and what really is their function if they're not doing their own bookkeeping, which I don't believe they are. Or you're getting all the bills directly from the bus driver, correct, Dawn?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I have a labor, five point five hours for three hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents from Precision Electric with no description on it from nine-nine, oh, here it is, sorry. Fan blower motor install. Something lift station. Here, we're talking about that lift station, and that's not the lift station for the people. What is? Is that something electrical that I don't understand?
I'm not sure there.
And then, um...
You're single.
LED lamps, a socket, a timer switch, LED security light, a markup on that material, and labor for eight hours for outside lights at Lincoln Park Manor. Nine hundred seventy do, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and five cents and three hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Look at those.
One question. Is Precision Electric still with Street?
Yes. As far as I know, yes. The same. It looks like they, they invoice separately, but as far as I know, it's the same entity. And an HR seminar under the old commissioners' names. Dawn, do you want to talk about HR today? Did you have any follow-up information for us? K-Camp Annual Meeting will be held Thursday, or excuse me, Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM in the Convention Center at the Hyatt Regency in Wichita, Kansas, which I assume is during the KAC Conference. Is that the right date?
What's this?
I believe, isn't this the KAC Conference as well at the Hyatt?
The 12th, the Hyatt Wichita, the 12th and...
So, did you go to the annual one? No, you weren't at the annual last year because it's the first year.
No, I went in period.
So, they hold the K-Camp and the K-Work Annual Meeting at the conference, which is nice because then you can be at both at once.
Right, right.
Um, this is just a notice. That'll be, these are the minutes and they want to have a delegate, a voting delegate.
We voted you to be that, really, haven't we? Made you a delegate.
Well, this must...
That's how we made you the delegate for, maybe that was just for the general meeting, huh? For the commissioners' meeting?
During the, it was the, it was the commissioners', the KCC at Kansas Commissioners.
Kansas Association of Counties.
KCC, and this is K-Camp. So, I would take that, if you want to nominate me for this, I'll take that and fill it out.
That was, that was for K-CO, was it? Instead of, Ednako was the National Association of Counties.
We're not in that.
No, well, we, they want us to join, and I went to Washington.
But I think what you guys named me for was when I went.
To be a delegate for Kansas Association of Counties.
I know. No, Kansas County Commissioners Association. That's just for the county commissioners.
Oh.
So, you have the Kansas Association of Counties, which incorporates all the different elected officials and all the groups. Then you have one for each group. So, we have our own commissioner one, and then they have an appraiser's one, and then they have a treasurer's one. So, what we were talking about for is just the commissioners. This is for K-Camp, our insurance company, pool.
I'll add an A here if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. We'll all be there, but then I'll just...
I'll make a motion to nominate Alexis Lou as our delegate for K-Camp at the annual meeting in November 12th in Wichita.
What's that end? Is there any further discussion? I do have to say, their numbers were pretty impressive last year when they gave their reports, so I thought it was, it's a pretty, it seems like a pretty good investment for the county to be part of K-Camp as far as insurance.
Is K-Work there there too?
Yes, that's a separate.
You gotta be delegate for them too, somebody?
Yeah, they'll probably be sending the same information.
You need to be delegate for all of them.
Um, I'll call for a vote on that. Those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Motion carries. Do you want to look at the minutes?
Oh.
Was there anything that you wanted to discuss?
This is last year, or this year's. Last year's been again. Century 2, it's downtown there.
Um, I would like one small correction under the correspondence for the Wilson Lake Estates. Dawn, I do appreciate everything you put in there, but this makes it sound like the Wilson Lake Estates Homeowners Association is saying that we need to make a decision as to whether or not we can include them in Russell County, and it doesn't really work quite like that. Um, so if you would just change that to say... Okay, go down to correspondence on the first page. The last sentence says that I related that the Wilson Lake Estates Homeowners Association has contacted me that if the county is not willing to repair the roads, then redraw the county lines so that they are included in Russell County. It, it just makes it sound like that's an option that we have. I don't, we can't actually make that decision, so I just, it doesn't have to be deleted, but maybe it should say, um... perhaps excluding them from our county is an option because we can't force Russell County to take them. You know, we can't force the the re, uh, what do you call that? Yeah, we can't redo the boundaries on our own without another county being involved, so... How about you just say then perhaps moving the county line is an option? That was the comment to me is, well, maybe it should be petitioned that they get absorbed into a different county.
Or just, like, end that county line period and strike the rest?
End at, if not willing to repair the roads, then perhaps exclude them from Lincoln County as an option, which would mean that obviously another county would have to take them on, but we, it just makes it sound like we have the choice, and then people might be saying, well, go ahead and move them into Russell County, but we don't really have that ability to just do that. We can petition to redraw our boundaries, but we would have to have an agreement. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Who does that? Our boundaries ever be moved anytime between any counties?
Yes. You, it's a, it's a commission decision. Um, I think there has to be an agreement though, and you have, you can't have less than four hundred and some odd square miles for your county. So, I think right now we have seven hundred and twenty, so really, we couldn't even split in half technically. To, we couldn't reduce our size, I should say, by, by half, but, um, yeah, you can move, you can move county lines.
It'd have to be approved by both counties, I'm sure, and then, probably the state would have to prove it too.
They do have, yeah. You petition to the state.
Because you're changing the whole state around there. Who would do that at the state level? Would they vote out it actually in the assembly and then the governor approve it?
I don't think it has to go through the Congress. I think it's just basically like approval from the state. I suppose it would be the government. There's a statute on it.
If we lost land, then you'd lose obviously taxing authority for some property.
Oh, yeah, it just shrinks your total base.
I've read these minutes and what you, I'll agree to what changes you requested. And I'd vote to make a motion to approve the minutes for September 30th, 2019.
Okay, um, those in favor, a second. Excuse me. And those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I think these bills are fine with me.
Okay.
Lincoln Park Manor. We'll get one of these.
Okay, I'll just sign these.
Any other action needs to be done?
We need to make a motion to approve this allocation of twenty thousand dollars to the transportation bus, and I will just repeat that we definitely did budget that.
We budgeted, yeah. I remember.
But I think we need to follow up with a meeting with the bus board, so...
Do we want to approve this now? Make a motion?
There's no reason not to. We've already budgeted it, and I think um, that's the minimum match that we needed for them to write their grant to get the rest of it from the state, so... I move to approve the grant application letter for the bus board allocating the budgeted twenty thousand dollars to the bus fund.
One second.
Any questions? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that is actually, it's two letters. I thought they were the same, just two odd copies, but it's two letters. And it basically authorizes Jerry Philbrook as the signer on the other one. Is that okay that we do?
Yeah.
Oh. And I'm going to list you as the alternate on there. Is that okay?
Right, yeah. I plan to be there.
L-O-H.
L-O-H, M-A-N-N. I see that's Tuesday. I guess we have a meeting Monday, the 11th, and then the 12th is the meeting, so we'd have to leave here Monday after a meeting here and go down there, huh? Or is it? I don't have a schedule yet of all their events, do you?
No, but it's online. It's always online. I'll look it up.
Yeah, they sent, they emailed me months ago. I don't know why they, back in August, they emailed that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know why so early.
So, this is 6:00 PM on Tuesday.
But there are other meetings and stuff going on too, right? Well, two days.
But they usually, they usually wipe out a big slot for that so that there's nothing really conflicting, just without a particular issue.
I know. I bet there's a couple others now. I kind of know what's going on.
Okay. They should have a list in here. These delegates are going to approve this for the board of Lincoln County, and I don't think we need to handle it. But he'll be there too, so...
Oh, yeah, I love, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then that goes to the county clerk. They didn't give us a return statement or anything. This, I don't think we need to do anything with this.
Okay.
It's just a notification that they don't have that branch.
Long as they follow up and get somebody to do it, I didn't know if we'd have to approve of somebody, or something.
So, I guess since we have this in front of us, this human, yeah, this is for him. So, um, do we need to... Dawn, do we need to move forward with our follow-up interview for HR?
What do you mean?
Um, do we need to call back our second candidate and move forward with that? Because last week we had a motion on the table to remove one of our interviewees, and it, I mean, that motion still stands as far as I'm concerned, except we were going to continue with the paperwork that we didn't do. So, was that paperwork finished?
No.
So, we're just going to put that off till next week?
Probably should.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we finish our paperwork with that. We're letting that motion stand as of now, but we may need to basically rescind that motion or change or make a new motion to override it if we're going to continue on with that. So, you need one more week?
Probably, because I've not heard that from...
But you did get all the information you needed, because that's what we were missing. Okay, so we have all that. We're waiting on paperwork. Okay, we can push that off till next week. We have Next Tech coming in, and then we have the highway department, and someone that has their house out at the Wilson Lake Estates. Annual conference. Agenda. There we go. So, this is last year's. We don't need this. I think you... What does this say? Please, can you read that, please? Something, the date?
Please something data?
Date. I think it's date to something.
Please something date.
It's last year's one that we...
I don't know what that means.
Did Jerry tell you anything about what he wants? He, he made a note on the old one, but sent us the new one too to copy. I don't know if he...
I think it says update. Please update.
Please update.
Oh, update, okay.
Which I updated it.
You did update.
To just change it to the next year. Gotcha. I don't need that.
We need these back from last year. We can have them.
I'll recycle them. Okay.
While we're waiting, I guess, here for Next Tech, sometime I think we better get, pursuing this nursing home issue again.
Have you heard back from the fire doors?
No. I will call them this week if I haven't. But we have residents up there, as LaDonna told us, concerned of what's, if we're doing, and, uh...
Let's just schedule a meeting up there. I will say, though, I've heard back from some employees that things are flowing more smoothly.
I heard we, they lost their administrator.
Oh, just now?
Well, last week.
I didn't hear that.
I heard he moved to Goodland area or out there.
I did not hear.
But I think I heard that through employee. I don't know, way ineffective, if he's still there or not. I'm just saying he's gone.
Well, that's a shame, because I was just hearing good things about that person and that structure.
Yeah, I'm going to...
Is he actually gone?
Well, I don't know if he's left yet, but I hear he's processing.
I haven't even heard that yet.
I've just heard it through employee that he's going to.
I thought there was something in our lease about being updated, about the, about the hiring and...
We have, the lease has not kept up.
At all.
Yeah, you know that, right. So, but we need to pursue this stuff again. And we had left several, a month ago, a couple weeks ago, or longer, almost a month, we'd made a motion to, uh, to, uh, have our attorney
File.
File a suit against the operator. I've not heard any more about that in Iowa. Well, I guess we were waiting because we were still dealing with the attorneys in Topeka, but I guess we'd get them notice that we no longer do their services, and that's correct, right?
He already sent his final bill. It said final bill, and it also said to see the note for paragraph nine, which said that he would retain all the information that he's collected, and we didn't have access to it.
So, we need to check with our county attorney to see what the situation is with, uh, our...
Here's, here's that letter. I have that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's the lease agreement.
Well, we know they violated it, Alexis.
Oh, no, this is the old one.
We know that they haven't paid rent. We know that they haven't kept us up on census.
Yeah, so...
So, uh, well, we know that. I mean, that's obviously an issue. What we're going to do about it is the question. Was it, at one time you spoke up?
Well, I had, yeah, I have...
Well, you had talked to K-DAD's people, and you said they would have, and I know we...
If we are in the process of, if we are in the process of terminating the lease, then that puts us in a different category for requesting the state to not necessarily intervene, but to keep us on the lea, on the facility license, and then look at what we need to do for the, what's called, what are called the payment of payer, payer agreements? Something like that is the terminology for Medicaid and Medicare.
And, but we had our, our attorney here while we were still using Mr. Hay as a coordinator with K-DAD's. We, we, she did not want to, you know, pursue any other opt, or any action yet until, but now that since we're have in our relationship with the Topeka attorneys, we should be able to proceed and maybe deal with K-DAD directly ourselves or with our county attorney. Something, right? I don't, what's your opinion on that?
Well, the whole reason that we hired Mr. Hay is that the county attorney said she didn't feel equipped to handle the situation. But I will say that for twenty-some-odd thousand dollars, we hadn't gotten any more information out of a secondary attorney from Topeka than we were able to get on our own, so that is concerning to me.
Yeah, I, we don't... Yeah, well, we don't. That's ended now, so we need to pursue the, proceed forward.
Well.
One, one way or another here, doesn't it?
Right, right.
Do you think we should try to contact K Dads again and tell them?
Absolutely.
Back and get our position again and, uh.
Would you be willing to travel out there? I almost think.
To Topeka? Yeah.
I almost think that's what we need to do, is be face to face.
And have, actually sit down meeting with them.
Mm-hmm. Dawn, how, how do you, how would you want to go about that if we were to have a, a technical open meeting, because we'd have more than one person there? Would you wanna travel?
I think I have to.
Could you do, I mean, we could do by phone conference if, if you don't wanna, have to leave you.
First, we needed to contact them, those people, to see if they would be willing to have something like that, Alexis. But then get, go from there, right?
Here's this while we're at it. This Cummins is out of Wichita anyhow, where we got the contract from.
They're all the same company.
Yeah, so I'm not.
They just have got different offices. So they should be able to coordinate that contract.
Yeah.
But that needs, I don't think we should, uh, can you contact K Dads?
Here's the new, um, yeah, trying to set up a meeting.
And, uh, talk to them about. Yeah. We need to get, uh, pushing this, cause it's October and it takes time to do any of this stuff. Okay?
Do you have a copy of the lease?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. It's being violated. We know that.
Yes.
You might be able to have a staff person come in the office, come here, like, and have an executive meeting.
Yeah, we could request that, or have them come here.
I guess my concern is who, because every time I call there, it's a different person, or I'm being rerouted to someone else who knows more or less about a specific subject.
There is a, it's a new department. It's all new, and it's about the, the nursing home. And I know I heard facts, or somebody gave some information here that was incorrect. Uh, they were all, Silverhead Legislature. We heard them day after day.
Who is they? Who we heard?
The new K Dads Department for, uh, nursing homes.
Okay.
Not that particular person, but the person that can't call.
Okay, okay. Well, that's true. Yeah, there's a different sec-, and they call it a.
And there was twenty-two state hospital. Twenty-two were taken over by the state, and they were all successfully sold and are all operating.
They are all successfully operating. I don't know if they're all sold yet.
Yes, they are.
Okay, but the last time I talked to Wilson, it wasn't sold yet.
Just one that was not.
Okay.
And maybe that is the one, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we talked to that lady, newly before.
Uh-huh.
She said all twenty have been take help, taken over into.
Oh, yeah, they're all functioning.
Except one, and that was because the facility itself had
Right.
physical problems which couldn't be fixed, so that had to be closed down. But it wasn't because of the, the business.
Yeah, I think we need to start getting in direct contact with ourselves, with our own spaces, with our own phone calls.
Well, we could go there, too. I don't care either. But we need to deal with them. And, uh, maybe our attorney should go, too. Or something, because we, well, they need to be involved. The attorney's gotta be involved, Alexis. On all this stuff, if we're dealing with different operators, current operator, you know.
I know, I just feel like we've had the same attorney for how many years and have gone through the same issue how many times. You know, it's like, you bang your head on the wall enough and it still doesn't work, so.
Well, we need to pursue it until we have.
Attorneys haven't helped the situation at all, whether it be the local attorney or the one that we hired specifically and paid lots and lots of money for it.
Well, we have to have them if, if we're gonna be dealing with current operator or get a new operator. We have them attorneys for license, leases.
But we really don't. In fact, I sent, I sent an example lease that I had found between, and it was actually opposite situation. The government entity was going to rent the nursing home facility from a private owner, and I sent a copy of that lease to every elected official, and this is before you're in office, to give an example of how you may set that up to protect yourself. And instead of doing that, or, you know, looking at that, or cutting and pasting any material from there, we basically took the lease that was from two thousand and sixteen and transferred it over to the next year and put someone else's name on it. So I really don't see how that's been beneficial. I mean, at this point, I really don't think our county attorney wants to deal with it. What has been done by that office about it?
Well, they did the last lease.
They did the last lease, and this is where we are.
And I'm not really, well, but that was because the operator violated it. It wasn't the county attorney.
But when it's your own lease, you would think that when someone violates the lease, you would protect the lease by acting on it. We've, we've requested that action. And instead, we have her get a piece of information that we had sent to the state, who claims they never got it, by the way. Everyone in that State Department says they've never received that letter from us.
I mailed it, and I never received it back, so.
That's not an accusation to you. I'm just saying the State Department says they've never received it. So that letter that we sent.
What State Department? What Department?
K Dads.
Well, K Dads has a whole lot of divisions.
It's the, it's the.
I sent it directly to the secretary.
The secretary of the, yeah, Department of Disability and Aging, um, Lauren Kelly, what is her name?
She's the governor.
Yeah, not Laura Kelly.
It doesn't matter, as long as.
Well, it doesn't matter, cause it was addressed to that, it was addressed to the actual.
Yeah, we have details right now. We just need to.
But the detail is that we haven't had any forward action, so we need to do it ourselves. I mean, we're not incapable of the communication. It's just that everyone suggests that you do it through an attorney. Well, nothing's.
Well, we do need attorneys, though, when we're de-, when we're negotiating leases and contracts, we need an attorney. Cause I'm not a lawyer, and I don't wanna sign something without an attorney saying it's okay.
I have written a more binding lease for an apartment rental than what we did for that.
So you're gonna be our attorney then?
I would gladly speak to anyone about the lease and change it. I mean.
We gotta have an attorney, though, like legal and liability, if she's.
Well, if we wanna hire one to represent us, if there's a court hearing, that's fine.
We have a county attorney, Alexis, to do that.
And what action has been taken out of that office?
Well, I don't know. I'm not criticizing her. I'm just saying we have one. We need to pursue this.
I'm not criticizing. That's a legitimate question. What, what action has been taken from that office on the nursing home?
Well, we haven't requested her to take anything specific, except, except, well, we have it against, uh, the suit in last month, I agree. Well, we need to contact her and find out what's going on. I'm wanting her to come here for a meeting, to meet with us, and, uh, I don't know if she's busy or what, but we need to deal with that. We need to invite her here next week or one, sometime and discuss this stuff, cause it's getting later. Either that, or maybe we should just keep the current, uh, operator and, uh, forgive all the two years of, uh, fee or, uh,
Rent.
His rent he hasn't paid and, uh, move on. Then we have an operator, we don't have nothing. Of course, half the, the population of the county is gonna be mad at us for not, uh, for letting it get by without paying rent. I don't wanna see that nursing home closed, do you guys? Anyway, we need to deal with it one way or another. A new operator or a current operator?
No, I agree with that, but I don't understand why the option is forgive the rent or close it. I mean, I'm not sure. You can come up to the table.
No, I'm not saying it should be the option, but we, well, we'll talk this later, she thinks.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Welcome.
Hello. Wow. Sorry, I had a freight truck come in while I was leaving.
And he's forgotten. He can just put it there, thank you.
Okay.
You wanna link that one up?
Okay. On the left-hand side is a sheet that just kinda lists everything in the packet.
Okay.
First of all, I had the head of our I T department run from the first of twenty seventeen to current, the number of tickets, number of hours, number of agreements, and the cost of those agreements. So you could kinda see how many tickets we've handled for you.
What does a ticket mean? Like a request for, a request for service? Okay.
Service.
Like a specific request for service? That doesn't include any kind of regular maintenance or?
Yes, it does.
It does, included everything?
It included everything, like if we put updates on the firewalls, uh, if we add.
On your own time, as far as, it's not, these aren't just our requests for your time to our issues. Okay.
Right. They're part of the, the contracts, part of the, uh, requesting service and whatever.
Okay.
So that, I just wanted you to have, kinda have that information, uh, so you can kinda see how many tickets we have handled for you.
So that's through two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen?
And nineteen, up to current.
Okay.
It does not include the last three months of twenty sixteen.
So through the contract, basically? And then are these costs per month? How is that listed?
Those are listed as the cost per month on the agreements.
On the agreements?
Yeah, on the labor. Um, I didn't even get that far. I think that's the cost per month, but don't hold me to that.
Well, I think our, our contract is like thirty-seven hundred a month?
Yeah, thirty-six, thirty-three, but he didn't.
Oh, that is the contract agreement there.
Yeah, those are the different contracts there, but he doesn't have on there like the county attorney's, um, I don't think, the, um, Office three sixty-five. Cause they added that. And then the sheriff, he does, well, yeah, he probably does, cause he's got the sheriffs, cause they've got their office, um, three sixty-five to email them. And that should be included in that fourteen fourteen. So. He sent me this like little after five Friday, so.
Okay, so that is kind of what the expenditures have been for us. That seven thousand dollars for labor, is that a total for the three years, or is that?
No, that's, that's, I think, per month, I think, because everything else is listed by month.
So that's the average amount of hours you guys have spent per month? Four hundred hours a month in the sheriff's department? That doesn't seem possible.
Sheriff's department, number of tickets.
Is that the total?
Two hundred and sixty-six tickets for the thirty-three months.
So four hundred hours in thirty-three months to the sheriff's department. Okay, so those aren't all listed by month. They're listed by the contract.
Yeah.
So then I assume the labor is listed for the contract as well, cause seven thou-, it can't be seven thousand a month, you're only paying four thousand.
No, I'm thinking that this is the labor that you paid over that period, not included.
We paid in addition to the contract?
Yes. Because your contracts right now, the sheriff's is pretty much covered, but you've got like Dawn, she's got the server, the firewall, and the backup. But anything at the P C level isn't covered at all.
So this is how much we had to call you in for additional labor?
Yeah.
That's not covered under the service contract?
Yeah.
So it's mainly the sheriff's department and the clerk?
Yeah, and the clerk is kinda misleading, because under the clerk you have, well, like the, the treasurer, the appraiser, registered deeds.
So courthouse, pretty much.
Yeah.
Well, the treasurer's listed separately, though.
Well, they, yeah, they, okay, so leave them out. So you've still got registered deeds, appraiser. Uh, you've got Noxious Ween landfill. And human resources. Am I missing somebody, Dawn?
Appraiser, did you say?
I'm not really sure, because I'm not sure why it's all classified under me to begin with, but.
You're what now?
Yes, I'm not sure why it's all classified under me to begin with, cause the server and the firewall is not my responsibility.
I guess that's what.
But that's what it does. They just dump it all on me. So it makes it look like I'm calling in all the time, and I don't call in at all.
But are you familiar with us paying these additional labor costs outside of our contract?
I have to pay for labor every time I call for my computers, so yes.
Her computers are not covered. Neither are the appraisers or the registered deeds.
Okay, so anytime that someone calls about the specific piece of equipment, you're coming in to look at that, or even remoting in, you're charging labor, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on.
Okay. So the next item is the full-blown TAS for, and again, this is the clerk. Um, and it covers the courthouse, essentially. It's got the clerk's office, treasurer, appraiser, registered deeds. Um, commissioner's laptop, it's got the, uh, Noxious Ween landfill.
This is the bid?
Yes.
This is the bid, and this is, Dawn, you gave her like that we would potentially have a laptop? Is that the idea?
It's this one here.
Yeah, and I, I worked it in so it'd be covered with antivirus and labor and everything else. This is purchasing the new server, new, uh, backup, updating your firewall, new computers and laptops, battery backups for everything. Um, then I went ahead and on the newer equipment, like the county attorney, current, uh, county attorney's office, they had a laptop and a P C. I worked them in with extended warranty, put them under the contract. The three PCs in the clerk's office, this laptop, the H R P C, and the highway department's P C that was just purchased recently. They're all rolled into this as well, uh, so that they could be fully covered. And then the continuum, which is the Windows patching, security updates, antivirus, and malware uh, on all PCs, laptops, and the server, and your backup, okay? And then the Sonic Wall Firewall appliance, update that. And then Office three sixty-five, um, for everybody, and in Dawn's case, she could put one on her computer and one on this one, because she, she's licensed for up to five devices per each email address, okay? And then the treasurer's office, the same thing there. They've got three employees, got six computers. They could put the office apps on the three on the counter, but they'd only need three licenses. So that's all covered.
So these are your suggestions for new equipment purchases with the Windows ten update?
Yeah, yes.
By department?
Yes, I broke it out by department, so you can kinda see.
So the total is on the back?
Yeah. And if you look, I put a sheet in here, too, on each one of these that gives you, here's what the total TAS would be over a thirty-six-month period. And then down below on the outright, it's on the second page there, the outright purchase, the cost, the breakdowns, estimated labor.
Is this replacing all of your owned equipment by us purchasing new for ourselves to own, and then you just covering it? Cause what I understood about the TAS, I thought, was that that's your equipment.
Yes.
So is this a cost replacement value for us to purchase that same equipment and us own it now?
Okay. If you go with the TAS, Next Tech would own the equipment, and we would be responsible. Let's say a monitor failed. We bring in a new one.
So are these all separate?
Yes, you got the sheriff, the health department, and courthouse, which are all the.
But I'm saying that the prices on the, are these three separate bids as to what we can, what our options are?
Yes.
So the first one for sixty thousand, that's if we purchase everything and own it ourselves outright.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm on the first one that was in the packet.
Okay, the Lincoln County clerk? And that was thirty-five ninety-four per month?
No, they all have the same cover sheet, tech, TAS, service for, oh, clerk. Okay, so here, that's courthouse, not clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but what I'm asking you is, are these prices for you to still own the equipment? So sixty thousand, twenty-five thousand, and twenty-seven thousand?
Yes.
And does that include one year's?
Most of the equipment that we sell has three-year warranty on it.
No, warranty, service contract. Is the service contract in addition to these prices?
Okay, if you, if you go with the TAS, it's that one amount. You don't actually purchase the equipment, so you don't have that expenditure of the fifty, sixty thousand, okay? It's all included in this.
You have to back up.
Okay. If, if you go with the TAS, technically, you're leasing the equipment. Technically, we own it.
Mm-hmm. I understand that.
So when we, if you were to sign off on this, for example, we would come in and we would purchase all this equipment, get all the licensing, and put it in, install it. You would pay for nothing until we were done getting it all ready to go, and then you would start paying that thirty-five ninety-four a month for three years. So there's actually no additional expenditure, cause I've got the Office three sixty-five, the continuum, the hardware, the service, everything figured into that thirty-five ninety-four a month.
And there's no, the, these aren't purchase prices? These are just the equivalent of the cost of the transfer?
Okay. Transfer-wise, your existing equipment? Um, let's say, for example, in the emergency management, he has one.
No, I'm talking about just the whole thing, cause you have, you have three separate packets.
Right.
One for sixty thousand, one for twenty-five thousand, one for twenty-eight thousand.
Right.
You're saying. You're saying that's not our purchase price, the transfer thing, because we're not purchasing it. You're bringing in new equipment valued at that rate.
Right.
But our only cost is to renew a contract for thirty-five hundred a month? I'm confused about that.
Okay, let's say, let's say you decide to go with this for the county, okay, and for the sheriff, and for the health department. You've got three separate contracts, all right? If you decide to do that, we'll come in, we purchase all the equipment, we put it all in, we get all the licensing, we set you up in our, our consoles and our managing, um, NOC center. Essentially, we own the equipment through a lease, it's a three-year contract, and all of those costs for the hardware, for the licensing, for the continuum, for the Office three sixty-five, for your firewall, and your backup, the service to back it up off, off-site every month, or every day, uh, and then monitoring reports for all of that. All of that is factored in to that three thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars a month on the courthouse, okay? So that's the only thing you would pay.
Okay, but it's really, it's thirty-five hundred a month, it's fourteen hundred a month, and it's seventeen hundred a month.
Mm-hmm.
Those three, where's the health department in that?
Theirs is the fourteen thirty a month.
No, that says sheriff. Oh, no, wait.
That's, that's seventy ninety-one, the sheriff.
Okay.
There's the sheriff, health department.
Ambulance is figured under the courthouse.
Okay, so every, every other outlined department is thirty-five hundred a month, plus health department at fourteen hundred a month, plus.
Sheriff at seven.
Sheriff at seventeen ninety-one and eighteen hundred a month.
Highway department is under.
You have a total on that?
Under the courthouse.
Courthouse.
Yeah.
So you've got three, three separate things here.
Right.
Sheriff, uh, health department, and courthouse, and everything falls under courthouse, it ain't sheriff and health department.
Yeah.
So emergency management, EMS, uh, that's all really, hell, highway.
Okay, but what you're showing us with these totals in the red is just the equipment transplant cost is what you're, you're valuing.
Are you talking this one?
No, you have a, you have a total of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents.
That would be if you opt to buy outright and no contract, okay? So if you wanted to buy everything listed on this quote for clerk, treasurer.
What you're offering to transplant, basically, is what you're saying, if we wanted to buy it outright and own it, that's the price?
Yes.
So it's the value of what you're offering as the equipment transfer?
I'm not quite sure.
No, she's giving you a price, either we own the equipment and we do managed service, or we do a managed service in which they own the equipment.
You don't own the equipment, you lease it.
Where's the price for just the managed service that would be, do you see what I'm saying? You gave us a price, if we buy it out, let's just stick with the sheriff's department, because these are broken down. You have a total monthly contract, thirty-six month term, for seventeen ninety-one, so eighteen hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
That's for you to come in, transplant all this equipment in this packet, and service it for thirty-six months. That's what we end up paying, is seventeen ninety-one. So this value that you're giving is the value of the equipment that you're transplanting out. So if we want to purchase it, we can pay twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents. Where's the monthly cost if we do that? It's not here.
Okay, if, if you purchase it outright, you're not purchasing additional services, and I do go into some of that later here, okay?
So what would be the point of purchasing it if we don't get your monthly contract for services?
That's, that's one of the reasons I put this second sheet on here that takes out the TAS versus outright.
Okay, where are you in the packet?
Second page on either, any one of these three.
The second page, okay, I'm gonna stick with the sheriff's department. Okay, so if we spend the twenty-seven thousand and just sign up for your coverage on, on the equipment that we now own, because we have to purchase equipment or get updated equipment for the Windows ten transfer, I'm following, you're following?
Okay, I think so, yeah.
Then where, then show me the line item for what our, if it was, if it was eighteen hundred with your equipment, where's the line item for, if it's our equipment?
Okay. If you purchase it outright, and then you want contracts for a monthly service, roughly, um, on this, I kind of show you the breakout, the server, the backup, Sonic Wall renewal, continuum, which is your antivirus malware, Windows patching. Um, and then what the cost of the PCs, the continuum, the backup, which would be if you purchase the backup outright, and then if you want to go off-site with it, I've listed that here, be a hundred and ninety a month. And then the renewal of the StorageCraft software, which runs the backup, would be two hundred and twenty-four a year. And then we have the initial setup on the continuum, then ongoing labor now.
Okay, you don't have a total, there's nothing underneath that.
Sixty-nine thousand, that'd be for three years.
Yeah.
It'd be four thousand seventy, seven eighty-one more for three years.
Yeah.
If we buy, if we buy it outright, if we do the lease thing, we're paying sixty-four, four seventy-six over three years for the hos- for the, uh, sheriff's department.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, show me that again?
Right here, that's what it is if we do the lease, if we do this right here, that's seventeen ninety-one for three years.
But that number doesn't match that number, this is the.
Oh, that twenty-seven thousand, yeah, what's confusing.
You have twenty-seven thousand on the last page, and then you have sixty-four thousand on the second page.
What's confusing her is the last page you have, the twenty-seven thousand, buying it outright.
That's when you're buying that right, and if you took and added these numbers, you'd get to twenty-seven thousand.
The hardware.
Right.
Without service.
Right.
She, she, they'll sell us the hardware for.
So this sixty-four thousand is the three, thirty-six month total on top of the twenty-seven?
With buying hardware.
Yes.
So they don't have, she doesn't, you don't have the hardware being bought in here, and that's what the last is.
Well, on, on that second page, we list the outright purchase, you've got server and switch, there's ninety-seven hundred and thirty-six.
Yeah, and then you got, right, so you've got it broken down.
Yeah.
You have it there, it's just broken down.
And I.
You just don't have it in one chunk, twenty-seven, the batch back here, twenty-seven, that's all you're confused about.
Okay, no, I understand now, that's built into the price.
There's a twenty-seven total to buy the hardware, they have it broken down here, the hardware's, but she has a service switch backup, she has it broken out in it. The PC mode monitors, fourteen grand.
Right, so where's the breakdown of the, of the monthly cost? You're saying it's basically.
Okay, so if you did a Sonic Wall renewal, that'd be a one-time fee. The continuum would be ninety dollars a month on the server, which is listed there. And then the continuum, which is your antivirus malware and, uh, patching on the PCs, would be a hundred and five a month.
Okay.
The backup off-site, uh, for the two virtual servers would be a hundred and ninety a month.
Okay.
Sonic Wall monitoring would be fifty-nine ninety-five a month.
Okay.
So those would be your monthly fees.
Those are the monthly fees?
Yes.
On top of the, the purchase price?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we buy the hardware.
So it's four hundred and forty-five dollars a month, continuing for thirty-six months.
Right.
So it's, it's sixteen thousand eight, eighteen twenty.
Okay, keep in mind that those contracts, like the monitoring on the firewall, um, and do not include labor if we have to come out and work on it, okay?
None of it includes labor, from what you said, because we've already been paying labor, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, you get, and on the continuum, you get the monitoring, um, same way there. Now, on the backup, you would get the monitoring, and you get the off-site backup, but labor would not be covered if you purchase it outright, okay?
If we don't purchase that right.
Okay, what I'm looking for is the comparative to, what is the benefit of purchasing, instead of purchasing outright? Because basically, what you're saying is the.
There is none, it's cheaper to go lease it from them, and you get a service contract with it.
Yeah.
So the, that's the way to go. She just gives you the option, if you want to buy it outright, and then we'd own the hardware. That way, then, in three years, if you sold the hardware, it might be worth something versus, we lease it, we don't have any hardware, right?
Right, at the end of three years, the, the three-year contract on the lease, we come in and do a total refresh.
You take it out.
This, this is the comparison, then, what you're trying to point out, the blue on the blue.
Right, right.
So we're basically gonna spend sixty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for the sheriff's department over the next three years. That's with you continuing to own the equipment.
Yeah.
If we upped it and spent seventy thousand, then at the end of the three years, after the service contract, which is included in that price, we own the equipment.
Yes.
Service contract ain't included in.
So for five thousand more, we either own the equipment at the end of the three years, or we don't.
Right.
But we have to have that upfront initial purchase cost to buy the equipment at the turnover of the initial part of the contract. If we want to buy the equipment, if we buy it outright, upfront, we have to have that upfront cost, which ultimately, over three years, is gonna cost us five thousand more to own the equipment at the end of three years. But you're gonna service it as part of that trans, transition.
If you own the equipment, though, you're not paying for the service contract, right? No, they're not paying for the service contract, if we own the equipment, we gotta pay that extra. If we lease it, they pay for it, right?
But that's what she said, she already just gave me the numbers for that, it was four hundred and forty-five dollars a month.
That's just for your antivirus and malware, your Sonic Wall monitoring, and your off-site backup. It does not cover any labors. Let's say they had to come out and work on the PCs or the laptops, it's not covered.
Won't cover labor, whereas if we lease it.
But it wasn't covering labor over the last three years, that's why we have this seven thousand dollar.
If we were on the managed service, it did. The problem is, is the ones of us that are not on the managed service, they just couldn't afford it.
But that's everything on here, everything on here's been billed. The, the health department, the sheriff, the ambulance, emergency management, highway, treasurer, clerk, they've all been billed.
The, the items that were not under contract, like, for example, the sheriff had off, or Microsoft Office, when they initially went into their contract, on their computers. But then they switched from, um, I think it was, uh, e-mail to Office three sixty-five email. So we had charges there, because they weren't part, that wasn't part of the contract. And then the setup, the maintenance, the, that was not part of the original contract. So that's most of what their billing has been. Now, recently, they had an incident where the little five-port switch back in Mike's office failed on the weekend, and that got billed because it was after hours, and it was an emergency, we need to get him up and running, they had to determine what caused it. So their, you know, adds, moves, and changes on a contract are not covered for the most part, because let's say, for example, and, and we go, I go into that more in detail further on through this. If we had, uh, we want to move the, uh, emergency management department, that labor to move them, and move the cable, and move their, you know, put them behind another firewall, or whatever we need to do, would be billable time. So it's.
So Dawn, at this time, is each department budgeting for their own contract and their contract line item for what their portion is in the next phase?
If they have a contract, yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
And, and this is gonna be more, because we're adding more. We've got the registered deeds and appraiser, who were not on anything before, other than the semantic antivirus, right?
So again, just to, uh, review this, this, this first page, like seventeen ninety-one for the sheriff's department. If that'd be the lease option, that would include all the support and labor, so includes labor and support for everything.
Right.
Okay, then if we go to this other option, which is down here, where we buy the hardware, that would include some support, but not all the labor.
Right.
That's the difference, okay. So when you see that bottom portion down there, that doesn't always, that won't include labor, so if you had to come out here and fix something, that would be extra above that, so that's.
And that's why I have that line there, the second line, uh, on the second page.
Yeah.
Down at the bottom, we have, based on the numbers, the number of PCs, the server, and everything else, we factor in approximately what it would cost per month labor-wise, so that, I did factor that in.
Okay.
Uh, on the sheriff's, I think we factored in at four and a half hours a month, for a total over thirty-six months of twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars.
That's, I got twenty?
Yeah, that's just possible labor charges that may happen, that could be more, depending on what goes on. So, and that really doesn't include travel either, that's just labor.
Now, if we do this, like the first option, this lease option here, and that includes labor and everything for everything. Now, if we need, if a computer broke, or that laptop broke, you replace it totally, it doesn't cost us nothing?
Yeah, on that, where we're extending it and recovering it, we probably, um, would fix it. Now, if, let's say, for example, um, and her three computers, I had to extend the warranty on those another three years, just to get them under the contract. Um, if we put new computers in the treasurer's office, and let's say one of them, the hard drive died.
Yeah, right.
We come out, and if it's fixable, we replace it, reload the OS, go.
Yeah, you either fix it or replace it, that's up to you, as long as it gets to working for us, we don't care if you fix it or replace it.
But if you have a monitor that goes out.
You just replace it.
Yeah, we just replace it.
Okay.
Okay, so if we were to add them all together, what I'm getting over a period of thirty-six months is six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars a month.
What's these other, uh, county clerks?
So that's about thirty, that's, I think we were at thirty-seven hundred a month, what'd you say, thirty-six hundred a month?
Yeah, it's thirty-seven, I think roughly, right now.
So that's a three thousand dollar a month increase.
But you're covering a lot more.
You're covering everything compared to about twenty-five percent.
Yeah, twenty-five percent, I mean, you're piecemealed right now. Some people have some, some people don't.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we don't have that budgeted at all. There was no increase in anyone's contractual line item for the next year's budget, so it's really not even physically possible with our numbers.
What's these other, uh, you have some other, like.
Yeah.
Uh, twenty-nine, thirty-seven, uh, county clerk, uh, paperwork, and then you have, uh, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, uh.
Okay, if you go on through this little cheat sheet I got here, we covered the TAS. Now, um, this next sheet is basically, if you wanted to do a TAS for just the server, the backup, and the firewall, that would be full coverage on the server, the backup, firewall, which is, those are essentially the backbone of your network, okay? And you leave off all the PCs, PCs you'd have to purchase outright. Um, I did one for the courthouse, and one for the sheriff, and one for the health department. And as you can see, without all the PCs and all the office licensing, they come down. So you've got eight thirty-seven for the courthouse, you've got eight twenty-six for the sheriff, and eight oh-six for the health department. And that's only covering the server, the backup, and the firewall.
Is the three-year, uh, contract, is that your maximum?
We can do five-year, um.
At a fixed price?
Huh?
At that fixed price?
No, it, it's usually lower on the five-year per month.
Okay.
So I mean, if you want, I can compute that and get that back over to you, but I wasn't sure. I'm not sure we can take, like, Dawn's PCs and this laptop and get them out to five years, because the, her PCs are already, what, a year and a half old? Um, so I'm not sure we can give that warranty extended another four years on them.
But you were, but with your total transfer of equipment, that included everything, all the PCs?
Yeah.
So it would be that number is what I'm looking for, three-year versus five-year?
Okay, I'll get that.
I need to correct a statement. The health department and the sheriff's department are already on managed service agreements, so those costs are already being budgeted.
Then why do we have this additional expense for them? The sheriff's department had eighteen hundred dollars, well, you said one was out of, out of, off-hours, or whatever.
And the Office three sixty-five email, that was an additional expense, uh, the setup of it and everything.
I guess, but what I'm saying is, for seven thousand dollars over a thirty-six, not quite thirty, thirty-two month period, that doesn't, and that's us calling you at our will, that doesn't nearly add up to what it is to increase our coverage, just so we don't have to pay that labor separately.
That is the labor that was billed.
Correct.
Okay, some of that labor that in those tickets and those hours was not billed, because it was under contract. See what I'm saying?
So all we have to do then is take the number of hours that you already have.
Times a hundred and fifty, and that'll give you your total.
Times one fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just thought it might be beneficial for you to see how many tickets we have processed.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And, you know, that's, I'm actually surprised it wasn't more, um, because we have other counties where we do full TAS with, and they have, um, a lot of tickets, and they're usually.
What's the stat TAS then?
We would call.
Technology as a service.
We would call more if we didn't have to pay for it. It's seventeen, it's eighteen thousand dollars worth of labor over the thirty-six month period.
Well, I don't think we're gonna decide anything today, are we?
No, I don't think we wanna decide without our other member, board member here. But yeah, I wanted to thoroughly get the numbers, so, 'cause I don't wanna be confused. I'm not a techie.
Um, the last few pages, just in a brief review, if you decide to purchase your, your computers outright and your servers, I have one there for Office 365, which would show you what it would cost a county per month. Um, and keep in mind that this number's already worked into the TAS number. So, then there's another one for the continuum, which is like the antivirus and the patching and all of that for all the PCs and, uh, servers. And then the installation, it's nine fifteen a month. Again, that number's worked into the TAS numbers. If you purchase outright and you don't want contracts and you don't want the continuum, I showed another quote with the Trend Micro antivirus only, no patching. And that's what the initial investment would be, is a three-year subscription. And then whatever our labor was to get it all set up. I will tell you that on the highway department, um, in talking to Dawn and in going back through our records, they really don't need a firewall. So I did not compute that because they're not handling confidential information. And as far as paying for a total backup, a hundred and ninety-five a month, we can put PC backups out there, fifteen dollars a month per PC and that's sixty dollars, so it saves quite a bit there. So I showed that.
I have a question, like on, uh, so you have rans, so you guys have security and all this stuff, uh, whatever, we, some ransomware or something got through to our whole network and locked us up and, uh, they wanted a hundred thousand to recover, uh, data. Do you guys responsible for that, or you got, you got insurance policies? To pay us back or something like that?
Yeah, we do have a service agreement that will cover that. And there is additional charges for that. It sure insures you up to a million dollars, I believe.
But that'd be an extra above, more, more cost yet?
Yeah.
So that ain't included in this stuff?
No. Would you like to see that number?
Well, not real. Well, I'm just curious. I thought since you have all this back firewall, backup, uh, virus protections.
When you recompute the five-year cost, if you just give us that additional price of what that insurance is, out of curiosity, I think-
Well, because some people think when you have firewalls and you have, uh, virus software, that's protecting that and not necessarily.
Your, your firewall is your first layer of defense. Your antivirus is your second. Your patching is basically your, well, your third.
But hackers are making new, uh, software, uh, all the time to, uh, go around a less, uh-
Most dangerous thing, right? Security system, this right here. If you're right-handed, this right here if you're left-handed. How many lines of defense you put up, this could defeat all of it.
Yeah.
By your own choices. Yeah, I see.
We do have an option as part of our-
So really, we should invest in training.
Yeah, and we can do that.
Yeah.
We do it internally. With this continuum, there's a next step up where we actually sand, or you can even sand, I believe, um, emails out that are phishing attempts.
Uh, and see how, see who's accidentally or interestingly-
And if that, or anybody cooks on it, they have to take a test. So it gives you a report.
Okay.
I just had to take one.
In the interest of time, we are behind. Don't tell us that.
Yeah, um-
Um, so we will look this over when our other board member returns and-
If you need me to come in-
I know that we're in a loop because we technically ended with our contract and I'm not sure how you do that, if you-
We'll just carry you until a decision's made.
Or we call you and you bill labor or whatever, if something happens. But I know that we'll probably make a decision by the end of this month. I know we'll, I understand we'll have that thirty-day gap, but we kinda need to take our time.
Option and then that tier option on the security.
Even if you just email that information, Dawn can get it to us so that we kinda have some numbers to look at. Thank you.
And what it, what an incurious thing would be for a ransomware or something?
Yeah, that is part of our third tier on the security. That's important. So I will get that for you and-
Thank you. Thanks for putting up with my questions. No problem. Okay, highway department?
Gordon, how you doing? You getting along okay?
You bet.
Good?
Things going good.
Good.
You all aboard now and wheels are spinning, huh?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we got a great bunch of guys working there. You really do.
Well, good.
Good.
I mean, they just need a little guidance.
You bet.
And you're gonna get an office person soon, right? Next week?
I was wondering what happened there. I never heard here what happened.
He accepted it and he'll start the fourteenth, so next Monday.
Accepted the offer you gave. Very good.
So please bring him in, especially if it's money, that's great. And then we can actually, you can introduce us and then we can officially set the wage. Sounds good.
So one of the first things, here's, there's a few pictures and then a few pricing for the mower system that I think we should be using, utilizing. So as you can see in the pictures, it attaches to the three-point. So that would allow us to use the tractors more than six months out of the year, because when you have a rotary system on there, you can't take it off on a limb to use it to pull a sheep's foot, anything like that.
One of my questions was, to pull a sheep's foot, I understand you have to have a lot bigger machine potentially than what you need.
That's on the grid. On the grid, roller is really, really heavy.
So any, any-
But the sheep's foot and peg rollers that we currently have, our tractors are sized big enough that we, the ones we currently have, we could use them.
Got it. So then is there the, I was, my question was, of the ones that we are potentially going to purchase, can the one, say, the Lincoln, the one that stays in Lincoln for this route, can it be the bigger one that can be used to pull that grid roller then? It's kinda my question where I was going.
We're gonna need a, a big tractor, a special unit to pull that grid.
So you need, need a two hundred plus horsepower tractor for that?
For four-wheel drive.
Minimum, 'cause this one, the one, the second grid roller we have that we're putting back together now is even heavier than the one we currently use. And the tractors we currently utilize for mowing are a hundred, a hundred and thirty-five horse in that range. So a flail mower, the biggest thing on them, so. Can't put rock showed up with a new tractor similar to our one at West Fall with a new mower on it.
Was that you? Did you call Canclis?
Yeah, well, they called me.
They just showed up and I'm like, ah, it looks nice, it looks good.
One guy called me and I, I was, I gave him your number to contact you guys.
Well, it looks nice, but it's not or after.
He was a salesman from Topeka or something.
That rotary mower hanging off the side of it, at least twenty thousand dollars. As you can see on those prices right there on those ones, under five thousand. And the biggest difference-
Is this something we can purchase now for the current tractors and then they can be transferred over from you?
Yeah, they just mount on three-point and run off a PT.
My thought was to get one before the end of this year. We can trial it out.
Your tractor too?
No, just the mower, just the mower.
The pool behind, or is that the same thing?
No, they're all the same.
It retracts the hind?
You can, and it'll dip down up to sixty degrees, sixty, anywhere from sixty-five to fifty degrees. And it can go completely free from your rear tires off the side, and it can even go up to ninety degrees and trim trees and shrubs.
Okay.
The biggest thing, yeah, difference, so it's a quarter of the cost, bar none, a lot less weight, and then we can use the equipment for more than six months out of the year.
Okay.
Because then we can use it to pull grid rollers.
How much are ours, what are they?
What's that?
How much money?
The-
They're twenty-five hundred, twenty-three hundred? What did it say?
The one was twenty-three hundred. That was a small one, anywhere from two thousand to five thousand dollars.
Depending on size.
Yes.
Okay.
What are you thinking is gonna be needed?
A sixty to seventy inch.
A big one? A little one?
Those are little. They, they're meant to be used by forty-horse tractor.
Okay.
I don't think we should go to forty-horse tractors. We should keep our bigger ones so we can utilize them for pulling the sheep's foot and the peg roller.
Okay.
Those, you don't need any, yeah, because they hook to a three-point, it's a lot more stable on the equipment and it can be taken off easier. You don't have all the excess weight like you do with the rotary. You have a lot more versatility of the, it can go, a lot more control of it.
Okay.
And the rotaries, we, we have a little bit of a problem with them. They're sitting out alongside the tractor and they're stirring up so much debris. We're plugging the radiators and the air, air inlet. And that's one of their main problems they're having with them is the one tractor, they gotta stop all the time.
Picking up dirt and-
Yeah, all that debris is up there being stirred up. It's right by the radiator.
Right, and then you get it plugged up and it's oil.
And with these, it's gonna be-
And the biggest thing is safety with these.
I, I think that's a good idea. We talked about it at the meeting with the guys before you even here. It's kinda what they want. I can see that you've done your research. We, we need to get, I'm wondering if you're gonna get a better price if you get, if you buy, how, how many are you planning to buy, five?
We would have five.
I'm just saying, are we gonna buy one and test it? Are we gonna see?
I think for the, I think for the price of it, it's, we can waste five thousand dollars, or five thousand dollars has been probably wasted on a lot of other things that just sat.
I'm not against it. I'm just saying, but do you call in and say, hey, if I get five, do I get them for forty-two hundred a piece?
I know what you're saying.
And that's what we buy one. That's what I-
Maybe we better buy one first to try and see if we like it. Then we could buy four or five.
Really, really like it, then we can buy four and get a better price.
So who's gonna test it?
All of the drivers.
They will.
Okay.
We would, we would get one of them in this year and then let everyone try it, 'cause we may, some of the concern was, well, now it's behind me, not alongside me. How can I see it? But we can have mirrors or backup camera. Backup camera's a hundred dollars. We can mount the backup camera with a monitor and it can look right behind you off that fender well.
Okay.
But just to see the quirks of it, they can understand it. So a lot of counties and everywhere I'm from, they use these because of the safety aspect. So with those rotary mowers, that's a big blade turner. When it hits a rock, it sends it out to West Texas. Those are little flails. Those are the flail hammers.
Yeah.
When it hits a rock, it, there's not much weight behind it. It just kicks back.
Yeah. So I'm just, I don't think we need a motion. We're just going to approve that you make that purchase.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll move with that and you go bring us bids if you're gonna start looking at tractors.
They have a budget right down. Do, do you have a tractor to pull the grid right now?
Okay, that's what you wanna do first. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do they have a, they'd have to take it out of their equipment, uh, line item or whatever. Is that right on the, on the department budget? How does that work?
Well, they have multiple line items, um-
Well, though, it doesn't matter that much.
Well, no, they need to know that though.
Yeah, you gotta need to know that on your accounting.
Brendan needs to start looking at that and see.
On your accounting, you got, on your budget, you got line item for this money and that, you know, and that we just wanna keep your, your, uh, accounting correct.
Okay.
There's one like special equipment and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's the regular equipment fund, then there's a special equipment fund.
Right, and that's, we just wanna make sure that's correct.
And you probably, you'll be getting a quarterly report, won't you? Dawn isn't the quarterly coming out soon?
Yeah, we'll be soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm for going ahead and get her. You guys want that?
We just give you verbal approval. Thank you for checking in.
Thank you.
You guys can keep them.
We talked about creating a, an actual comprehensive purchasing policy where each department gets a maximum amount where they can make these type of purchases without quote-unquote approval. But mainly, it's supposed to be for habitual expenses and consumables that you know you need, like lubricants and yada, yada, um-
But even small items like this, I would say a mower left at like ten grand or less. How much is this gonna be?
Under five.
I almost say we'd think to do that without our approval, couldn't we?
But I like them bringing it to the table. This shows the plan of attack. You know, you're, you're-
Oh, yeah, I think it's good.
Like, this one is twenty-four hundred. It's a, it's not a commercial grade one. It's, you can buy it off Amazon for that price if you want to.
No, I think, no, I want you to bring it to us too and discuss it. But I don't know, we have to make a motion to approve it all the time.
We don't, but I think we were talking about maybe like a five thousand dollar minimum.
Either way, we'll get, I think you guys, that's good. I think it's good to pursue that. Somebody said the other day they saw somebody bringing in mowers over there and I'm going, what are you guys doing? Buying ready?
No, that's what it showed up. The driver got upset with me.
I was joking. I was joking to this guy. I said, no, they're buying all this stuff and not even telling them.
The driver got upset with me, wondering why it was coming up here. I'm like, I requested Thursday information on a flail mower. Not a brand, it's a nice tractor. It'd be nice to have, but we, we don't need that.
Need that, yeah, okay.
No.
All right.
It's too much money.
We need to be able to utilize our tractors to their fullest before we go.
Norman, you got a question?
Yeah, I questioned the necess- necessity of this equipment because I'm talking to a US representative and they are discussing this in Topeka. Do we really need to be mowing these roads?
Yes. No, she says no. She says no. We have Diana Dirks, Puck Dirk.
No, but it's, it's dangerous on these corners, Norman. You got these grass and weeds growing this year with all this rain, five, six feet tall. It's dangerous on these corners with traffic coming. You can't see.
So your commodities, your materials.
Is when we grade a road up. When we grade a road up, we can't pull weeds and grass and dirt up onto the road. We gotta get rid of it.
It's the same reason why the highway, the state does the highways for line of sight.
That's okay, that's okay. I just wanted you guys to start to get familiar with how you're gonna look at your budget and-
Okay. Cause we have, I haven't been that far yet.
I know.
We know. We just, we just want you to know what's going on.
Sure. But this is what the report is gonna look like when you get your quarterly and I guess this one.
And you'll have line items within your budget and that's all. And we're just saying, with your accounting, say, well, we bought a tractor that goes under this line item. We bought a, uh, bridges and stuff. Like you get culverts that go over here, you know, it's just knowing where, that way then the accounting's correct.
Have you seen one of those yet?
Yes, part of one.
Brendan, you probably already dealing with that stuff.
A little bit.
Yeah. But no, I think that sounds good, you guys. Get them mowed.
Well, that's where I think the biggest miscommunication that I've seen with the highway department and the commission is some of this purchasing issue. You know, it's like, where's it gonna come from? What is the projection into the future as to where it's gonna come from? How are we gonna fund that? Where we can move and shift some money around? Like your commodities are basically your smaller purchases for, you know, your regular incidentals, I'll call them.
Fuel and stuff. Of course, fuel's expensive, but-
Well, I think there's a fuel line item.
Yeah, right.
For itself, because we're budgeting for that. So, looking at fuel contracts, things like that, those are some of the discussions that I've never seen come to the table, which are gonna be really helpful. I mean, I tried to push for some fuel contracts last year and it really just went on its face. It was too late.
I did get bids before I purchased this last one. I was able to go with the lowest for both the diesel and unleaded. I went, home oil, got the unleaded. He was the cheapest for unleaded. DNS was the cheapest for both diesel.
And you split it. Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
At one time, I've actually contacted two great band of oil and they, they was gonna give us a contract.
They weren't gonna be able to get out here fast enough.
Okay, that's fine.
We were out of pure diesel.
Yeah, well, that's good. Whatever you, I'm just telling you another name to public that.
Yeah, well, I called CBA as well. There was a paperwork in there said twenty nineteen fuel contracts, but nothing had ever been signed from anyone.
It wasn't, because I had requested it. It was kinda late in the year, so contracting it at that point kinda turned everything on its head. Um, but I will tell you one thing, someone made me aware that we have a local person at one eighty-one X Supply, which is over in Sylvan, that sells lubricants, like bulk lubricants. And I don't think we've ever looked into that.
Okay.
You could price them there, 'cause we've been ordering lubricants from out of area. And we had talked about having, we'd also, we need to get on some of our policymaking, but we had talked about having like a local purchasing policy. If it's within ten percent of your lower bid, there's no reason to not get it locally and recirculate the money in the community.
Probably within Lake County. Of course, I know we don't have a lot of big, uh-
Suppliers.
Wholesale fuel and stuff.
I didn't know they sold bulk lubricant, you know?
Okay.
I think they can, I don't know if they do by the tote or whatever, but-
So the equipment that we're looking into that we'll bring back in the next few weeks with bids would be the, a tractor for a grid roller, because we have two of them now operational and we need to be using them. And excavators so we can start replacing these culverts that we can stake and there's-
You was talking to Ford Gordon was saying, maybe you can get used or have a reasonable price.
Yeah, and we haven't got to the excavator yet.
That's fine.
Tractor for grid roller.
And let's just say that when you get this next quarterly report, why don't you delve into that? You'll have yourself an office person. You'll have a little more time to delve into that and you can kind of, we need to-
See where we can work it in.
Dig into that budget and see where we are for the end of the year.
So I, I get a quote from Quartz Act for the Grizzly. Without having a definitive number of tonnage in mind, they do six to forty-five a ton. He said, when we came up with a tonnage figure that we were estimating for having sand to mix with our clay material for the pits.
Six to forty-five a ton.
Six forty-five.
Oh, six?
Six dollars and forty-five. So it's six dollars and forty cents for the five cent fuel surcharge or energy surcharge.
Okay.
For the month. He said, that's, they, they can only do retail on that.
Grizzly you called it?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Six dollars and forty-five cents a ton.
I thought at one time it was like one or two bucks a ton.
That was what, uh, area manager told me when I started out there, if they could sell it for that price, but-
There, it's in demand?
No, it's just, it, it's a waste product, so they normally just haul it away. So if they stockpile it-
There's a million tons of it.
And because without having a definitive number, we want X amount of tons.
Okay, so the price may vary depending on if we can give quantity.
And stockpile more of it for some of our roads, then they, they would discuss lowering the price.
Well, we have our own sand pit, right, that we ran up by the lake.
Yes, but to haul the material from all the way up there to there, it's gonna be the same price as hauling it from right here at this price.
But if you're on the west side of the county, that would be better, yeah.
Right, right now, we got a couple of roads over there. They put some real clay stuff on, finish up that pit.
Right.
And we need sand, but bad. We need-
That's fine.
And does the equipment cost for us to go out there and haul it over there? It's the same price if not less to pay for the rain.
And also they'll load it for you here and just, right, I realized that. That's fine, just six bucks. I decided one time it'd be cheaper than that.
And we lost a mechanic, right?
We just have lands.
So, yeah, so have we had any, uh, applications? Dawn, do you- Donna, do you have any applications for the Highway Department?
I don't know that answer.
And then, speaking about material pits, High Plains owns the pit just south on fourteen that we, they let us into.
Oh, Lonnie Rogers, sure.
So, I haven't touched it because we don't have a written up agreement with them, we met with them last Thursday. They're getting the agreement written up, so that way we protect both parcels, I guess in the past we were just, we'd haul out of there, and we would bill, set, tell them to send us invoice for the material, but I'm waiting for us to get it in writing.
They came and visited us with a partial contract, and.
Yes.
And they're gonna finalize the contract and then give us a copy of it, so we can all look at it.
Two bucks a ton or yards?
Two fifty, a yard and a one forward.
But two fifty, there's two hundred and fifty dollar a year rental or lease agreement.
And that was on the page that was missing, it was either we take a hundred tons out a year, or we pay two hundred and fifty dollars as the yearly rental lease.
Okay, but, the other contracts that we have for the open thirteen pits are all uniform. I'm not sure that we wanna start deviating and doing individual contracts for different, I mean, if the material is needed, then why do we need a contract, let's just say we're gonna buy X amount, haul it out of there and not.
Well, mainly for the purpose of, cause we would be, it's their pit, but they would allow us to operate as well in it.
So it's kinda like a subdivision of a, but then why can't we just purchase the material outright, I'm not in favor of signing a contract, because we're gonna have thirteen other pits with contracts that want that dollar amount, cause right now it's all uniform, whether they have red rock, whether they have sand.
The difference is, they're, we're dealing with those other contracts, or that's us with the landowner, this is us with the leaser. So they're, they're the ones that are currently leasing it from the landowner.
I'm saying, why can't we just buy it out?
And we're buying it, that's.
Why do they wanna lease with us, why can't we just say, okay, we'll get your minimum tonnage and haul it out of there?
That's basically what the agreement is, it's not a true lease like our other thirteens are, it is us purchasing the material.
It's a contract price. It's not a, not a timing span, okay.
And it's ma- basically making sure that we're both on the same page about what equipment would be in there, what we don't want in there.
They say it is, I haven't looked.
Yeah, so they hold, they've held quite a bit from there.
Who's the lease holder now, with the landowner?
High plain.
High plain sand out of Tonoplis.
And we're gonna contract with them, huh?
Well, yeah, he's saying they have their own agreement.
That's fine, I just wanted to know how to deal with.
Yeah, but, cause they've got a lease, so we can't lease.
I understand, I thought you were saying. They lease and then they want us to take over their lease.
We're just gonna buy it from them directly, like, like, like we would, yeah, just like we'd go to courtside and buy.
But they're not a landowner.
We're just gonna, like, it'd be like going to courtside and buying a, a truckload of rock and pay them.
Having an agreement with them to get, to get a certain amount.
We would be hauling it out ourselves, cause they wouldn't have equipment posted there, it was, so that way we're in.
Is it, is it piled, or do we have to actually take our?
We, we, we have to do it.
We need a pit down there, though, I mean, south side of town, south side of the county, we don't have much down here.
And all the guys have told me that it's good gravel, I haven't went and looked at it, they said it's good gravel.
Well, that's good, I think that's fine.
It runs in various forms, you've got a lot of small gravel and stuff and clay, and basically you have to take the whole pit and blend the whole thing, because there's different areas that are, can't just dig over here and dig over here, because you're gonna get different.
So now is that, are we gonna be the only ones in there, or you got that other?
It'd be them a little bit as well, they said.
Now, they said they only use, what, a hundred to two hundred yards a year out of it.
Okay, I just wondered if they're involved, if we're in there and there and there.
They said they, they would only, they normally only use a hundred to two hundred yards a year out of it.
Alright, sounds good.
And then, talking about gravel pits, the taxes, all of the gravel, kinda gravel pits are taxed as commercial property. That's why we're not getting more people willing to let us go into their properties to test, because the amount that we generally take out of some of these pits is so little, it doesn't.
Probably tax goes up, and then they don't wanna do it, so they quit.
Thirty percent, so it goes from eleven percent to thirty percent or something like that.
So basically, if we don't haul a lot out of their pit for, during the year, they've lost money on the deal. And you don't even want it so they just break even, you want them to be able to get something out of it as well, otherwise they're not, they have no use to the land and they're not.
Is that up to us as a county to determine that taxes on that, or is that a, is that a state?
You are generating revenue with a parcel, it is considered commercial. Well, and, except agriculture is its own.
Is that like a state?
Yes.
That would be, they have to comply, our appraisers comply with that, we don't have a say so.
The only thing we could do would guarantee a, a minimum amount to them, that they know that that increase is gonna be covered in medicine. That's the only thing we could really do.
Give them enough revenue to pay for the taxes.
Pits open, it's kind of hard, we've got ourselves spread pretty thin. So maybe do a little bit of analysis on that and come back to us with an idea. We have to have a minimum amount to come out, and right now we're still only at two dollars.
One complaint I heard too by the landowners, they're saying they wouldn't even mind paying a higher tax if we're taking it out there, but if they close, if we close the pit, sometimes I don't think that goes back to, say, agricultural, it stays at commercial.
Well, I think.
Is that not true, Donna, or do you know?
Well, it would to the end of the year, it went to the end of the year, because I think it's as of the use of it as January first. So if we close a pit on April, they're still, they're still paying through the, and I believe that's right, you can correct me, Donna, if you know different. But I'm pretty sure it's until the January first, and then whatever it's being used as, as of January first, so if it goes back to ag, then it starts that new year.
I might talk to Truitt, we'll agree on that. Because he, I don't, I mean, I just wanna find out, or for information.
Pretty sure it's a January. And it's not finished.
I've heard that too, complaints.
Snag we're running into.
Yeah, Norman, what you got, another issue?
Yeah, are we mulching the roads after you build them, like the, the berms, the side of the ditches, are we covered? Are we required by the law to seed them? Because I've had issues with the county before, they build, you grade up the ditch in the road and you don't reseed it. How many days do you got before you have to reseed it?
You don't have to reseed roads.
Or you got an exemption?
In, in our right of way, we can kind of do what we need to do, but when you, are you talking about like pool, they call it pooling the ditches? Like they pull up a, a blaze width and.
As a contractor, if you're doing work in an area, and if you leave that area open for over thirty days, you have to come back in there and reseed it to comply with environmental regulations.
But, but ours is part of the road, i- it's actually part of the road, the, the.
Still environmental issues.
I don't know about that, do you guys know about that? I've never heard of that.
I've seen it.
I think the highway's that way, and I can't wait fourteen maybe, but I don't think gravel roads are that way.
Well then, where's the exemption?
It's not a requirement for us, you know, we own that property technically, we own it, so there's no, there's no decision that we have to have it. I mean, that's, that's like saying, if we pull up the ditch in, on January one, you don't seed in January to grow grass through the snow, so it's just part of the road maintenance process. But we're not a contractor. I mean, I can understand if some, if, if someone was digging up someone else's private area under a contract and they had to, we have to return pits, we have to, they call reclaim, we have to reclaim them, but that's not the same as our actual right of way.
No, cause we're on private property there.
Right, the pit, yeah, but we're actually in our right of way on the road sides.
And the line officer is an A requirement, when you do dirt work and stuff like he's talking about out in the field or pasture, you have to seed it for the erosion loss and stuff, part of KDHE.
Yeah, well, I could do.
Not, not for the roadways.
Yeah, the, yeah, pooling ditches is what they call it, at least the local lingo.
Well, like the block, NRCS can do that too, you've got.
No, I subbed now, I got on the call from them, I left another voice.
Do you want it?
We'll get another one here in just a couple days.
Yeah, you guys, yeah, yeah, you can look at that, thank you.
Letters that were asked to be written up, so that's for the two roads, they're separate, different, for the district roads. If there's any changes we wanna make, or if you want me to retype that up, where you can sign it and send it off to the landowner. One for the road that's just to the west of town, the other one that was on Jack Wire and one fifty. I included the KSA statute in there as well.
You're gonna send it to the landowners right next to there, are you sure you know who disced?
We're not saying it, in there it just says the road was disced, and they're the landowner, if it, they're renter, then they should let their renter know.
Okay, but this doesn't get, is there another part to this letter?
No, that was just one, ones for each one, what else do we want?
But I'm saying it doesn't instruct them to do anything or to not do anything, so you get, this is just like a notice?
Just a notice to them that something happened.
Please just do, don't do this again.
Just notifying them that they infringed county counties right of way.
Okay, I mean, I think maybe at the bottom we should just say, we ask that you no longer.
Well, that, that would be us saying that that person did it, when it may be their renter, their renters or. I, I doubt someone would take their disc all the way across.
Well, I guess I, I would be irritated if I got this in the mail, and I'm just saying, because it says, this letter is to inform you that the Highway Department has fixed the roadway, which they allegedly messed up, and is within their rights to seek compensation for the destruction of county property, so are we seeking compensation?
Well, no, this is just saying that we're within our right if the sheriff or the attorney want to go forward with it. So I'm not the attorney to bill them for it.
But wait, I mean, is this, is this something that was turned in as a report? Or is this just us notifying the landowner that, hey, you were in our road, we fixed it, please don't do it again?
One was the, the appraiser's office told me about a road that been disced, closed, and then Randy called me and told me about my road that was disced.
But I mean, this wasn't like some sort of report to the sheriff's department that something happened. So I would just like to see a closing that says, please refrain from.
I would, yeah. Please refrain from.
Basically like a warning, you know?
Please refrain from doing this in the future.
It, we technically, we could ask you for money now, or take you to, but that may not be our action, but if this happens again, I would say if we're having the same issue over and over in the same spot, we do wanna address it, right now it's not gonna be worth our time to go to civil court. And I don't want them to think that it, it's gonna happen, this letter kinda doesn't say if it is or it isn't.
It's a way of telling them that we don't, they need to go through.
Yeah, I would put down.
I just want a closing on it.
Right up that KSA, I would say, please refrain from doing this in the future, period, and that would, then they know not to do it anymore. Because, yeah, they, well, like I said, I know the people who did it, where I told you, that hadn't been graded all, and the weeds.
It had been, it had been, and it had just been mowed.
Well, it was, I agree, it was like four foot weeds there, and they just.
Pollard had just mowed it before they dissed that road up.
Well, he told me it was like four foot of weed there.
I could tell you I'm eight foot tall, it doesn't make it true.
Alright, well, whatever.
Well, this is where we have GPS tracking, we know where they are.
Yeah, I would add that, please refrain from doing this in the future, that way they.
Yeah, I'm, there's nothing wrong with that, I would just want some closure to it, cause it kinda leaves it open.
Did you gonna send one of them to the person out by, uh, Sullivan too, that you had an issue with, with gravel, taking gravel off the road?
No, I didn't have to report to the sheriff. With the pictures that guys feel like giving to me. My, my only thought, why I didn't include, please refrain from doing that again, that's me accusing this person of doing it, when I don't know who did it, I'm not the sheriff, it's not my job to investigate.
How about please ensure that this doesn't happen again, because if they are the property owner, they have some sort of liability for whoever works on their land, so just change that word then. Instead of refrain, please ensure that this does not happen in the future. I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, you don't wanna be accused of it. Do you have anything else for us?
Yes, there's two other things, but I think those were executive session things, one regarding employee, the other one regarding an issue with property damage that we've talked, spoken about before.
Okay, then, what I'm gonna suggest is just a brief, three minute break, because we have someone, we're a little behind, we're about fifteen minutes behind. I want you to stay for this, because it's regarding the Wilson Lake Estates issue. And then we can do the executive session after, unless you have somewhere to be that's emergent, is that okay?
That's fine.
What, what are you doing?
We don't have, no, that's more for terrorsine and things like that.
You're doing a good job, Brandon.
No, it's pretty dangerous. I've had to deal with the state a lot for different things and had to read a lot. That's what surprised me, this state, only started their reclamation law in nineteen ninety-four. And it's one page, and it doesn't even take a full page of the law. Where I come from, it's an entire book pamphlet. For all the different regulations you have to meet and everything. Just heard.
Somehow you got that one, you can stop and talk to Larry, maybe he was gonna talk to you guys.
What's that?
Larry was gonna talk to you guys about a couple of problems that we had.
We got a big list, but what I don't.
Well, I think you took down Larry's name in the first one.
Yes, though, yes. Right there.
South of this, there's two different places that need to be discussed. Right now, he's been done. Well, he's trying to do that, stuff them for that auction, he's trying to help. Scott, Scott Silver's.
Oh, okay. Hundred points south of this.
Right across from the cemetery.
Yep, where Scott's soft spot on the road.
We're, we're three and a half south. But, but he's got problems with the, well, there is, I do.
What's on the roads up there?
Well, it's, it's where they put in the culvert, and it's going into the water lane.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
And then over there on.
You gotta get that, come here.
Cause the way it was designed, made that water come back on our field and still going down.
We gotta work on those hills outside, it's on New June to do that.
Well, that's a lot better than woods.
Yeah, but the water's still running down the edge of the road, it's gonna end of the ditch.
Well, I know, the greater it's going to be, and I was, you know how close that is? Give them a wrong bridge, I said.
It's on New June, I'll put it that way.
Well, when you get out that way, then you can look at that culvert they're putting in, destroys our waterway.
Want you to come on up?
Uh, yeah, it was one of the, yeah, come on up, Alexis is coming in, in a minute.
Yeah, sit right up there in the hot seat.
Sit right up front.
How are you this morning?
Fine, how are you? Have you met our new highway director, there's Brendan McKay, he's with the orange hat, and our highway supervisor is Gordon Kruger.
I've seen you a lot of meetings.
Howard, Howard, yeah, I'm just a citizen, taxpayer, farmer.
All caught up in the farm?
No, never, never was such a thing.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to start picking corn tomorrow, I think we.
You're gonna get a lot of rain, you're, you're a good one, aren't you?
Yeah, we're, we're actually needing a little bit, trying to pick up weed up, but, uh, I don't know, I guess the way it works there.
Okay, so, we have Mr. Larry Enfield on the agenda, and we're talking about the Wilson Lake Estates, and out of curiosity, have you been out to see the landslide?
I have.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I know Brendan has, and I've looked at it, um, you've been out there.
Yeah.
And we don't have Mr. Gableman with us today, um, he won't be in, but I just figured we can at least discuss. And then we can relay some information to him, he'll be, he'll be back next week.
Sure.
And to fill you in.
I read that letter.
Yeah, I read the county attorney's letter, and I have some concerns with it. Basically. Basically, the first page. It deals with, the, the accusation is that the, it says the alleged road was not constructed pursuant to the plat filed in Lincoln County. And, so what I did was I went and got a copy of the map from Tammy, and she had sent it off to be microfished, but she sent me it in an email, and I was contacted by them saying that they had the original copy of the map, so they have that, and I think we need to look at it. Um, what the attorney general opinion said is that we need to have the map and start from there, because we did we or did we not, not we, and I'd like to just qualify all the people involved in this right now, we're not part of the original.
Right.
Situation, but, you know, did Lincoln County assume responsibility by actually approving the map? We do have that map, you have that same copy, I've looked at it to make sure that it's the same one. Um, and then, so I contacted Norm Bowers, and he is the road engineer for the Kansas Association Counties, and he said, it really depends on the map, you really need to look at the map and go from there. Um, I'm sure you have some things you'd like to say. I think that there's one thing we probably should follow up with, which is getting the survey results, that's what Norm also suggested, make sure you get the survey results, so that you can verify.
Turn it up.
Yeah, you have it?
No, this was just sent in two thousand ten to Wilson Lake Estates from my bowl area.
Okay.
The very bottom paragraph.
Okay. Okay.
All right, well, I think the most important thing we gotta do is we gotta establish whether they're county's responsibility or not. So, at the last meeting I was at, you guys sent Mr. O'Hare over to barricade that road where it happened, I took pictures, but you've been there and seen it. Why'd you do that?
We did that because when we came out of executive session, we felt that the information we were given by the county attorney compelled us to make it, you know, a decision to do that that was in our best interest for liability issues, and the fact that those have, it's publicly accessible, you know, it's not a big community, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right, and so.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that is a severely steep, uh, cliff there, and that goes off twenty, thirty, forty feet, you could, you, somebody could die very easily if they ran off that.
You're exactly right.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
That's why we did it, safe, safety, and I don't know if that complies us to.
No, I'm just.
Mean we're still liable or responsible for it, but that was for safety.
Right, right, so, you used to deliver mail out there, I think you told me once.
But not there, that wasn't, there's no mail route there, on that road. I delivered up on the hill, so, coming off of one eighty-one, is that one eighty-one? Yeah, those, the Ridge Road or whatever, those, those are, they're down there, there's a mail route, but there isn't there.
There are mailboxes down there.
There, but we delivered mail just right, right at the, uh, where you come in by the marina, there were like four or five mailbox there, that's where I delivered, we never delivered up there. I never did, now, now, maybe somebody else does, but I didn't, I substituted.
I take pictures, there are still mail.
Now, Leanna was, our postmaster here, was always wanting to know if, what we're gonna do with that, or if there is a road for mail or not, and I, we, but at the time, it wasn't.
Well, so we visited her, and there was mailboxes down there, and they used to deliver mail there.
Okay, well, I didn't.
And I got pictures of the mailbox, and we documented that. Um, so anyhow, you guys have been questioning like the map and the acceptance, and, and so, this is the original map that Norman Stoss brought over, and the commissioners, uh, accepted it, and it's got.
And that's what I got in my email from the.
Where, who made that up?
Registered deeds.
Is that Lincoln?
Here's the seal of Lincoln County.
What year is that, eighty-one?
No, nineteen seventies.
Well, I see a three twenty-three eighty-one there.
My compit, my commission, my commission expires.
That's when the guy that notarized.
The notarization, okay, I just wanted to know when, how, when.
Approved this twenty-second day of August nineteen seventy-seven, Lincoln County Planning Commission's, or to get it. And the county clerk's seal is on there.
And then, I had heard the argument that this road, well, here's the road right on the plat map, this is the road that's in question.
But it's in a dotted line, does that mean it's projected road or?
They're all dotted.
Oh.
They hadn't been established yet.
Hadn't been established, that was a planned, it was a planned.
That's, that's part of the plat agreement, that was in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-six, were also established that no road would come within twenty-five feet of an allosaw, or no house could be built from twenty-five feet of a road. And where is that rule? That's in the plat from nineteen seventy-six. This is, this is the plat, and there's nothing on the plat. The plat agreement. There's nothing on his, instead of the doctor, I'd like to say the plat agreement. I got a copy at the office. And I guess, I guess, to that thought, so in nineteen seventy-five, this county adopted the zoning resolution. Yes, sir. That's an attorney general's opinion. Yes, sir. And it says, well, they gotta comply by this. All right, so, I called attorney general's office and said, so, they accepted this, he said, let me, let me explain this to you. Took him two days to call me back. I'm gonna put this down. I'm gonna give you guys, here's a copy of attorney general's opinion. Attorney general's opinion, look on the very back page of that. The very bottom paragraph says, in conclusion, it is the office opinion that the roads around this Wilson Lake Estates are public roads, and Lincoln County is responsible for the maintenance of these roads. However, up above that, it says, it should be noted that on July first nineteen seventy-five, the Lincoln County Commission adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, which require the developer of subdivision to ensure that the county streets and roadways comply with certain standards. I said, so what exactly does this mean? They said, the reason this opinion down here, at the bottom, says it's their responsibility, is because when they accepted this plat map, they accepted what it was. So, there's talk about the road, which is my house that's on that road, that people keep throwing fit about. Well, guess what? The only way that got built is by building permit from this county. I'm building a garage over there right now, same thing, first you have to go to the homeowner association, they have to approve it, they have to go see where it's at, you have to have a survey to make sure the damn thing ain't too close to the property line, which I've jumped through all those hoops, then you contact the contractor, he then comes to this very courthouse and gets a building permit, which then has to be showed to the homeowner association to show their name's legal. So this county has authority forever, that house was built in two thousand five, they've had authority forever, they didn't like where it was built, they should've been saying something. They should've been zoning and doing something, but they didn't. And that house, where it sits, ain't got nothing to do with where this road failed. Has got one thing to do with that road failure. No, so you're at the very end of that court? Yes, I am. The first house that was in twenty-five feet of that roadway as well. Well, so is mine. I, I understand. But that has nothing to do with that road failure. I, I know, the Wilson Lake Estates and their plat, there's supposed to be an architectural committee, that meets before any roadway is established and built, any home is built out there. The new lot that's going up just to the east of you, where that raft ground is, I'd like to see the minutes on that, because that's gonna cause another landslide in the next ten to fifteen years. The way they're, they're ignoring the natural drainage, by sloping that off the way it is, all across the road surface. Well, and if, if this, if these regulations are gonna be enforced, the county should've been involved in it, they weren't, they didn't do anything. So whose fault is it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we approved the map, and then we knew the construction was ongoing, and then we were not involved in any of that process, I mean, that's, it's on the county, yeah, to be responsible to oversee that process, although they were not constructing the roads themselves.
According to Wilson Lake Estates, that road where it's failed, their plat from nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-six, the agreement they have with the county, that's not roadway, even though it's drawn in there as a roadway, it's not a roadway. And there's this on his desk, a picture of Mike looking at the landslide, but can you read what that sign says off the corner, please? Says private driveway. Yes, sir. Why did that say private driveway? I mean, you're new here. I, I know, I've been here. I'm gonna give you a little history on that, when I came, I said, you guys can't have a private driveway, that's an open road. They said, if you don't have a private driveway, you've got tons of people that come down here that can't get turned around, because the county never put up no signs that says no outlet. Well, in point and case, I had a guy come into my yard this summer, drove past a barricade, pulled a thirty-six foot bunker full trailer, came down to my house. Like, well, I thought I could go on through here. There was no sign.
And ultimately, if someone erected a sign that said private drive, and it's on a right of way, we should be notifying them that they cannot do that.
And take it down.
For us to leave that there and then claim that it's a private drive.
But there should be some signage up that says, you know, no outlet, no turn, something to notify people so they don't go down there. We spent about an hour getting the guy jacked around, turned around, and we got him out of there. But, how will he know? And that's the old guy at the end that put the private sign up, said, why do you think you put that up? We've had this happen a lot of times. And he said, the county doesn't wanna help us, so he said, what should we do? I said, well, that's the wrong sign, you should've never had it there. The, the opinion that he's reading right there, that was sent in two thousand ten, it said the roads, Alexis, do you still have it?
This?
Yes. That was sent in two thousand ten, where Mr. O'Hare sent to the housing states that we are not, nothing to do with those road surfaces out there. That's why that road has gray foresight rock on it, because that material's twenty-eight dollars a ton, whereas the underlying material is two dollars a yard. The rock on that road is privately paid for, is the county who paid for any of that rock on that road that we're talking about there?
Who's Mrs. Trueblood?
She lives up on top of the hill, she's the secretary.
On Ridge?
Yeah.
She's the secretary that brought the attorney general's opinion to the meeting?
Yes.
So this letter is to her, and it's from our highway department, and I'm not sure what the issue is, but it basically says, it's in reference to the recent inquiry by the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners into the issue of Lakeview Lane, that's, Lakeview Lane is the.
That's mine, yeah.
Um, per our discussion, the board of commissioners has requested a right of way of no less than sixty feet to be used for the public purpose of maintenance and transportation on Lakeview Lane and Ridge Circle, Ridge Road Circle. As you were aware, I was unable to locate any filing at the register of deeds regarding the change to the original plat for road relocation of Lakeview Lane. So does that mean that the current Lakeview Lane is not where the map Lakeview Lane is?
It is, and it says forty foot on here, it doesn't say anything about sixty foot.
Yeah.
Right on the agreement said, with the plat, was the county would establish and maintain road surface service lots one through fifty-three, or fifty-six, the sixty-foot right of way, and that's describing the main road that goes to the north, or to the east of everything.
The ridge, it's called Ridge Circle.
Can you pull that map over? So, according to the documents, it's talking about this road right here, from lots one to fifty-two, fifty-three, that would be this road here it was talking about, in reference, that was the one the county was going to maintain with sixty-foot right of way.
But they've been maintaining this.
I'm just coming in here, so. Well, I'm giving you a little history, they've been maintaining it. They have always maintained it since. Okay. Okay, so, why did that road fail? You've been out and looked at it, right? Yes, sir, road's not built correctly, you built it. That road has been there for forty-two years, and I don't care about being built correctly or not, the plat map doesn't ask for that. Let me explain something to you. Yes, sir. It's been there for forty-two years and never failed. It's failed in two thousand six to two thousand eight. No, it failed about four hundred yards on north, it never failed at that point. That's history. I know, sir. And that place was fixed by Norm Bowers, because it was built incorrectly down in his ratings room. This has always been there for forty-two years, since they built it, it has been there. Okay? So here's a topography map. I, I flipped the. Why, why, so you know what these lines mean? Yes. So that's fifty, every fifty feet is a dark line? Yes. We don't have rock here in Kansas, we do not have good formations for building roadways. You never build a roadway parallel with ridge, you build it perpendicular, that is how you.
Okay, but the issue is.
I know, but it failed there. It failed here one time, and it failed because this water washed across the road, it didn't fail because of the bad road, the water washed it out. Yes, sir, because of utilities in the. No, wait, wait, let's talk about this one, did it fail because the water ran across the road? I wasn't here for that. Well, look at it.
Well, how do you know about stuff in two thousand six and eight?
Because I can look at historic images of it.
If you weren't here.
The water ran across the road and failed because this ditch was bladed shut. Because of the utilities.
The culvert is plugged, the culvert is plugged, it's still plugged to this day, I mean, I've seen it with my.
The ditch was bladed shut, now the doctor lives right down below that, will testify in court to that fact. I asked him, I said, what do you think happened here? He said, the county kept blading shit in the ditch and filling it. I said, why didn't you do something? He said, for the amount of tax I pay out here, I'll be damned if I'm gonna take the shovel out there and dig it out. So I knew it was gonna fail, and it did. Mr. O'Hare knew that the ditches were plugged out there. It's no different than the bottom of that road when you go down to the pavement, guess what? The drainage is poor there, who do you think's went down there, shoveled out, fixed it? It wasn't the county, it was me, and the homeowner shoveled this ditch out, since they shoveled that ditch out, that road has not failed one bit, because the water's draining down through the culvert. I guess I'm starting to detect the same attitude here the way that Mr. O'Hare. I'm just, I'm trying. Well, I guess I'm starting to feel.
This is what he has read, okay, so.
I don't care, I'm starting to feel like the taxpayers pay a lot of taxes out there, and in return, they're getting nothing. So, have you seen this? Attorney general's opinion, like in ninety-one? Yeah, I'm sure you've seen that, have you seen this? Nope. Okay, and nothing was ever done here. The Lincoln County Road and Bridge Supervisor says, we're gonna put culverts in, we're gonna put guardrails in, we're gonna blade it, we're gonna maintain it. We're gonna put signs up. What happened?
Well, I will say that this letter, that letter from Mr. O'Hare a few years back.
I don't, I'm just.
No, no, I'm, I'm addressing some of the correspondence, because there's been some correspondence back and forth, as much as no one likes to talk about the history of anything, that letter from Mr. O'Hare indicates that it's private, a private drive, which, it was specifically told to me by Norm Bowers, if that was a private drive, it would've been established on the map originally, because when they approved the map, it would've said, you know, all these roads would've been left open, and then the little tributaries would've been labeled private, that's how you do a plat map like that in the subdivision. If you know there's gonna be a cul-de-sac, and the county or township doesn't wanna take responsibility for the cul-de-sac, you just label it private. Lincoln County did not do that, and it's not Mr. Lowman's decision, it's not my decision, I don't even know that you two, maybe your family out there, I don't know, but you obviously are just buying your house recently, so, the issue is what was done in the past, and that is being analyzed at this current time. I, for one, these are my constituents, it's my area, there's a lot of tax revenue generated here, and I understand that this is a big project, but it's also been part of our problem, because had we had some supervision on the maintenance all along, maybe the culvert wouldn't have been plugged, maybe the rain wouldn't have washed down the hill, we've had two years of astronomical amounts of rain, I mean, is the road constructed on a ridge of a potential landslide? Yes, it is, that's, none of us here did that. So yes, it was a poor decision, a poor structural engineering decision. Now, does the, does the attorney general opinions, uh, does the attorney general opinion state that there could be some liability or culpability for the actual developer, potentially? Um, but I don't think that Lincoln County is doing itself a favor by waiting on any kind of fix, and we had discussed some options, um.
Well, just, let me give you a little bit more history that I just learned this morning, I wanna talk to Mr. Trueblood, and this involves Mr. O'Hare. He said he was running the road later time, and he would come by and put a damn ridge of dirt this high where people couldn't get in their driveway, just for honoring us, he said, we had to shovel it out to drive our car over, he said, we brought over sixty pictures over to this very meeting and showed the county commissioners. The county attorney, who was his wife, said, this is unacceptable, who did this? Mr. O'Hare, well, nothing was done, other than then he was moved from that area and laid the roads no more, and now, then, getting the road and bridge. So apparently, there's just some kind of hatred, and it's caused a lot of problems out there. And there's a lot of taxes that come in from that area, like Mr. Trueblood said, in eighty-nine, we bought that house, our taxes were seven hundred bucks, now they're six thousand. I mean, there's a lot of taxes that come in from there, and the homeowners aren't asking for a lot. In nineteen ninety-nine, at that road thing I showed you there, the county asked to get out of it, they said, we don't, we wanna out of this. So.
Yeah, the county actually made it a point to say that they wanted to withdraw from being responsible there, so that indicates their intention to be responsible.
Okay, so, I, I haven't.
I know, I know, that's why I told him, you know what you've read, because you've been digging through the, your own material, we're just starting to get a lot of this compiled.
Mrs. Trueblood asked, so how'd that go? She said, and I feel the same way, she said, we asked maybe that they would donate part of the tax back to the homeowner association, we'll take care of the roads if they don't wanna do it. Fair deal, then you, you're out of that liability, you're out of that issue, just, and they said, no, we're not giving you back anything, and it made the homeowners mad, it's like, well, what the hell? You're gonna keep all of our taxes, and you're not gonna give us any service. Would that not make you a manager paying taxes with no services? I can see why the homeowners don't want that.
We see your point.
I mean, I.
But the problem is, is the problem started a long time ago.
But the problem is, is the problem started a long time ago.
Yes.
And now we gotta come up with a solution.
Yes.
And we're looking at it, okay, do we go out there and get onto private property to maintain a road? Read, read the, read the rope, what it says on the plat there. And, and there are probably some roads that do, you know, fall under county, but not all.
All, it just says that all roads are for public. I mean, on this plat map, it says all roads are for public utilities. So it is public road. I mean, we have people all the time come down there and drive through there, I'm sure. That's fine.
Do we have easements of all of these?
Well, that's what he's saying. The original agreement was for forty foot.
That makes it an easement. That makes it a challenge.
Yes, yes. But there was a letter from our highway department requesting sixty feet. And so there's where they started this discrepancy. Well, we can't get sixty feet. You built your houses closer than what the original allotment was according to them. But that all ultimately, the responsibility falls on the county. If we were to go out there and check the progress of the development and say, "Just like we having an issue now, we need to get out there and say, 'You are improperly draining this lot.'" If we don't do that, how are we gonna come to them after the house is built and say, "Well, now you're causing road issues." You know, we need to be proactive. And, I think that's where the commission has failed in the past. And this was before even the last board here. I mean, I'm not, this isn't, I'm not accusing the current players in the game. I'm just saying that we're all dealing with, the, the road itself is on a dangerous kind of, it's in a dangerous situation to begin with. You know, I had suggested potentially, what if we were to just move it in? They're already driving kind of in the ditch to go around where it's failed. But we're also, we're getting into someone else's private property. We'd have to acquire property there.
So I asked Norm Bowers about that, of course. Give you a little history, I'm a county commissioner in Sherman County. And we're trying to retire here. So I asked him about it, and he can't represent me because he represents counties. But he said, "I'm gonna tell you what. If you get a bad winter and a lot of snow and it freezes, thaws, heaves, that whole damn thing may slide. You need to get it shorted up before winter hits." Kenny Brandon that built the road said the same thing. You don't. So my concern, that's my only access to my house. If that whole road slides, it's gonna tear the power out, it's gonna tear the water out. We have no access to get propane to heat. Plus, we have our own.
So is, is Kenny Brandon the one that actually constructed Lakeview Lane?
Yes.
Well, I'm wondering if the commission can't speak to him. And, I mean, if there is some culpability, liability there for the person who constructed it, maybe we need to potentially talk to that person.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm gonna back you up there just a little bit because I don't feel like any liability from him, when something lasts for forty-two years. And, and Norm. I don't want to get Norm Bowers in trouble, but he agreed if the drainage would have been taken care of, we're gonna be talking about this today.
I can see that. I, I understand that point. But, I think we also have a point from our highway department that says that the road was built on the ridge. It wasn't built perpendicular to the ridge, or at an angle from the ridge. So, again, the county approved it that way.
Exactly.
They took on responsibility, but the, but the developer took on that responsibility too, to make that decision. So therein is an inherent problem. You know, how do we wanna, how do we wanna ensure that we're not gonna continue to have that issue? Because if it's happened twice on the same ledge.
Then there, then it's not in the same place.
I know, I know. And there is a drainage issue that.
I don't think you can shore that up, though. You look at that, where that's caving off, that's, you've got that sandy, sandstoney rock there. That's not gonna ever be stable right there.
Well, it's like, Kenny said, "You're gonna have to take an excavator down there, and you're gonna have to clean that bottom out," like it was.
Well, that's on private property. Down off that cliff, that's not our lot property.
We can get permission to clean that.
Well, then, that shouldn't county do that. We didn't cause that, on private property, go clean out some creek bottom down there?
Well, you know what? If the county had cleaned the ditches with their maintenance program like they would, what would we be talking about today? I wouldn't be standing here, we wouldn't be having this discussion. If the county had properly took care of the ditches like they should have, we wouldn't have a problem today.
Well, that may be true, but I'm just saying, I don't think you can shore that up now. That cliff, that's, that's falling off there.
Do you have a comment or question?
The ditches that are supposed to be cleaned out, is that where all your utilities are?
No, they're in the middle of the road.
But it shows, we was out there, there's, I saw some utility signs right there in those ditches. I saw the signs there, and I don't know if that's found, or, or, uh, what that is.
But we have utilities running through ditches in various parts of the county as well.
All over the place.
Yeah.
But they were there, there's a sign right there on that curve. Right on that curve that goes up the hill right there, there's signs, it's still that good.
Does it post-rock it as a water?
Yeah.
They just fixed a leak, right there in the road. It's in the very center of the road where they fixed it. I stopped talking to the guys, they had their little excavator, they dug it out, fixed it. So it's in the center of the road. Now, another problem's coming. Like the guy said, you know, when we put these in, they were all thirty-six to forty inches low cross line. But he said, "Over the years, we've had to fix a lot of problems after because the county keeps taking the crown off and shoving it in the ditch." He said, "Look here, this water line now is sixteen inches deep."
Well, yeah, I thought that.
Where is that on Ridge Circle?
Just before you turn by the barricade, right there in the corner. You can actually see where they went in and fixed it. Because there was water leaking out there. And they said it, a valve coupler or something on the part. But now it's sixteen inches deep. And that's what the guys, they've been there forever, put in the water line. They said, "Well, over the years, the county just keeps, instead of crowning it, they just keep blading it wider." And Mr. Trueblood on the top, he's got a picture where they used to back their pickup in the ditch and unload their lawnmower. There's no ditch there now. It's flat. Because they just kept blading it out, blading it out, blading it out. And that's what my point is. There's no ditches draining the water. So, when that water come down from the bottom of that hill, there was no, that ditch that's there now was totally gone. The homeowners dug that all out to get that water going backwards. But it run right down that road, around the corner, and caved that whole bank off. If the ditch would have been open, actually, we wouldn't be having this problem today. But, so.
I'm just, I, I look at that, I don't think I could shore that up, though. Because you have that sandy limestoney type, I don't know if it's limestone, but it's a sandy material there. That's gonna, you can't, you can put a barric, some construction on that, like even the concrete and beams ten feet deep in the ground maybe, or something, but I don't, even then, that may give, because it's unstable.
Let me ask you a question. Did you guys take bids when you took, got an engineering firm?
No.
You just hired one, right?
We haven't hired anything yet.
We, we asked them to come out to do an assessment.
Do an assessment, so, we didn't stop that, no.
What I'm trying to explain to you guys, when you was here before, and I think you're the one said, "Well, they gotta take bids." If you read this Attorney General opinion right here, there's a state statute that gives you guys authority to hire somebody or to contract with somebody to fix somewhere. My suggestion, Kenny built that road years ago. He'll fix it cheaper than anybody else. Ask him if he'll give you some guarantee to fix it. I'll guarantee he'll give you a guarantee, the county'll guarantee you to keep the damn water where it should be. So if he goes in and fixes it, says, "I'll guarantee the dang thing to hold if you'll make sure the water goes where it should be." I don't think it'd be a problem. And he'll fix it way cheaper than you're gonna get an engineering firm to come and fix it.
Is he licensed and all that stuff bonded?
I have no idea.
Well, we wanna, we need to get licensed people, because if something happens, then again, you got your liability problem, yeah?
You know, I guess one other thing I have to talk to you guys about. Have you guys turned in for any state or federal help with the disaster that's happened down here because of the rain?
We've had FEMA on some projects, I don't know what the length, I don't know if that one has been.
I doubt that was included, but we.
We've had some other FEMA iss- uh, issues, yeah.
Here's the name of the guy at state level that might want to call him, see if he can help you. Once again, the way this works, if there's enough damage, like four million dollars in the state of Kansas, which they aren't quite there yet, if that happens, you can get a presidential declaration. They'll fix it. And let's just say that Kenny fixes it for a certain cost, I don't want to be. And it fails again. If you got a presidential declaration and fixed it, then you can go back and get a mitigation grant. And the way that works, if you fix something, it's insanity to keep fixing the same thing over and over if it keeps failing. So the federal government has a mitigation grant, and we've used them in Sherman County. So you go in and you fix it. Well, it fails. Then you call them, say, "This didn't work. But we used the presidential declaration to get it fixed." They said, "Then go get it fixed right this time, because we don't want to do this ever again, and then give you a mitigation grant to fix it." I mean, there's a lot of alternatives to fix this. But the bottom line is, I guess I want to know, are you, do you feel like it's your road, and are you gonna fix it?
I don't know yet legally whether it is or not.
So we've been at this for five months, and you guys still don't really know whether it's your road or you're gonna fix it? When do you think you might make it?
Well, the county attorney's still reviewing it, that's all I know.
And I feel like that's a direct conflict of interest. So the county attorney is married to Michael O'Hare, and Michael O'Hare was a lot of the problem here. I feel like that's a direct conflict of interest. But that's my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm at, huh?
I understand that.
I would like the commission to speak to Kenny Brandon. That's my suggestion, to start there. Talk to him about the road itself. Talk to him about why they decided to build it along the ridge. Talk to him about what the, the fail stakes are for a potential fix. I mean, I'm not willing to go to court over this. That's my personal position. I don't see how we're going to let something happen to the point where they can't get access to their homes, and then we end up in court over it. I mean, that's just double spending, in my opinion. And we spend what, to defend ourselves and then to fix it? I will say that I'm, I'm not in complete objection. I am not in complete objection to finding an alternate route, but I know, I mentioned that to you, and you said you don't think that's a possibility.
You've been there, do you see an alternate route?
I don't. Yeah, I, I don't see a legitimate option there.
Okay, let me ask you one last question, this is a thought. What if the homeowners association fixes it? Fixes that spot? And then says, "All right, you reimburse us for that, and you remove that road off the plat." Because you're worried about the liability working out again. I'm just saying, what if we hire a guy to fix it? You pay for it. I want something from my tax dollars out there. Is the way I feel.
Well, I don't know. Brennan, Brennan and I talked about this, and he, he brought it to my attention. He's, you're thinking, and I'm just listening to him, that you, you, you don't know if it'd be hard to be fixed that because of the type of material, right?
Yeah.
That, that cliff there.
So that hillside's formed from natural landslide. What happens over thousands of years is that, how those hills form.
So they're saying they could maybe, or they can possibly try to fix that somehow.
If it fails sometime in the past fifteen, ten to fifteen years.
So my question is, so you're saying if it probably gonna fail again, it's not fixable? My question is, as a taxpayer, if we fix it, you pay the bill, then we remove that from the plat, it's no longer your responsibility, you don't have to worry about it?
Well, it was fixed without the county. I, I, I just started here a month ago, so I'm just wondering why the fix that was done in 2006 to 2008.
I, I don't know what fix you're talking about, because that, it was done, washed out in 2006.
Okay.
Where, where's the documentation, the pictures of it then? Because that, that is in after.
Okay.
Where did you find that?
Satellite image, satellite image, you can see where there's a washout. And that's where Mr. Brando, the one landowner, had said he had fixed something over there at the last landslide. And that's why there's concrete bollards now, now on the very bottom of that channel. Where that landowner was upset that there's concrete, not.
Is that an empty lot? Isn't it an empty?
It's that big trap, that big channel.
I mean, there are six parcels across there, so it's on an empty, there are only three homes.
You got a picture of it, like an aerial picture of it? Can you show me on the map?
What are you talking about?
Landslide, the historical one was right there. So this is our current landslide location. This one here, if you look at historical imagery, there is a washout right here and right there. Where it comes down off there. Mr. Brando fixed that and put big concrete blocks up there. This landowner down here, the concrete blocks are now forcing the water to go thirty feet closer to his house. That was a historic, that was a previous landslide that the county wasn't brought in to fix. They hired whoever built these roads out here to fix it.
And I can tell you a little history on that, but talk, so Kenny Brandon fixed this.
Yes, sir.
And where that concrete come from, this old discarded concrete?
Yes, it's now down here closer to this guy's property, forcing the water into his property.
Okay, so what happened? This, now I wasn't there, I just got here, June.
Okay.
I talked to this guy. He decided to make it a slap. Guess what? He tore it out and threw it over here and plugged the damn culvert up. And it washed the road out. So the guy came in and fixed it, they pulled the concrete down here. And this guy had to pay to fix it, because he's the one that screwed it up.
Did that fix?
That's what I was told. Now, I wasn't here.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
That wasn't in '06?
No, they, they said it was almost thirty years ago when that happened.
If you pull up the area with survey or historical satellite images, between 2006 to 2008, it shows the slide, and then it shows it being grassed over.
I don't know, I wasn't here, you were.
Okay, well, let's address the sign issue.
I don't know what he's talking about.
Section C eight, "No signs of any kind shall be displayed to the public view on any lot, excepting signs advertising property for sale or rent." So that sign shouldn't have been there in the first place, that private drive sign, according to the term agreement.
Yes.
But I will say that this only pertains to lots one through fifty-three, apparently.
Where the roadway would be built.
As far as all, that, all of these sections should or should not. And that, that's a, it actually says that "No road shall be constructed within forty feet, or twenty feet of an existing structure." No, provided that "No road shall be constructed within twenty feet of an existing structure." So I think we have that backwards. It was, it wasn't the structure being within twenty feet, it was the road being within twenty feet of an existing structure. But this, "And shall be approved by the Architectural Control Committee." Do you, is there one? Is that part of the homeowners association, the Architectural Control Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the question?
It says that "No road shall be constructed within twenty feet of an existing structure or dwelling," which basically inherently says that they're expecting more roads to come. Because they're saying, "No road shall be created within twenty feet of an existing structure[1615.02] created within twenty feet of an existing structure or dwelling. And all roads shall be approved by the architectural control committee. So is there an approval of Lake Lane?
The roads were in.
Okay.
From day one on this thing.
And listen to this. It says, and shall follow the natural topography of the land. That in and of itself is kind of strange, isn't it?
Well, that's where you come perpendicular to that topography.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you don't have the issue.
But they must have taken it. I mean, they did the exact opposite, is what I'm saying. Interesting.
So maybe back up on my idea a little more. So once again, the commission wanted out of this contract, wanted to let them build the roads. So what do you guys think? A big twenty-five percent of taxes back to the homeowner association, not to the homeowners, to the homeowner association? And they signed an agreement, said they're going to take care of the roads and they don't have to.
Well, I think a lot more than twenty-five percent of your tax dollars go to the road department, actually.
Well, I don't, I'm just trying to come up with an idea here how to solve this.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
I guarantee you, I think that roads will be a lot better, a lot safer and done a lot better.
Twenty-five percent going to that road department?
What's your, what's your total budget? What's your total budget? Six million?
Yeah, all your taxes.
What tax budget or what we could spend totally?
What you spend?
Your total taxes get divided up amongst many entities.
But what she's going with?
No, the county, the county portion. The county portion is much more than twenty-five percent to the road department.
Well, what's your budget? Two and a half million dollars?
Yeah.
What's your total budget?
Six and a half.
Six and a half?
Yeah.
Seven million.
Well, but that's, I mean, that's not how much we actually pool.
Well, say you do, say it is seven million and it's two and a half, that's over thirty percent.
Right.
Goes to road and bridge.
It's definitely over thirty percent. And it has been for a long time.
You said taxes, though. Taxes are not just.
Well, we don't, that's not what we, our county, county taxes is what you're referring to, right? You're not talking about school taxes.
No, I'm talking about county taxes.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's the point.
I mean, that's just an idea. I think that, I I can't say, I'm not a member of the board of the homeowner association, but you are, Jason. I mean, do you think they would be excited about something like that? I know that that was a thought when the county tried to get out of this in ninety-nine. They said, you know, give us back part of the taxes, take care of the roads and we're done.
That was nineteen ninety-nine?
Yeah.
How many houses are there out there in that block? In the whole development?
Yeah.
Probably forty. Forty, fifty-four total lots.
How many people live there?
Get them anymore all the time.
Not many year round probably, but but, well, but it shouldn't matter. They're paying, they have a house.
There are taxes.
Whether they're living there or not.
Come forward to have a house you go live there. Well, that's not our place to judge, but.
Well, if one just bought up on the hills, can move there in March and live there full time. Then next up a year, agree and live there full time.
It's not my job to say whether or not someone lives in their house a hundred percent of the time. It's my job to collect their taxes and appropriate services. The road maintenance itself depends on how much you use the road. So inherently, you would need less maintenance the less it's traveled. But filling up the ditches and the culverts with materials is not part of the maintenance plan that we should endorse.
I I really don't understand, I mean, what the hell we are talking about in this room. Just, I mean, it is just mind boggling to me. I mean, I I don't get it. I mean, we're we're out here paying eight, nine thousand dollars taxes per house. I don't even know what the average would be. Mine are six grand, his are.
Mine's eight.
Well, okay, seven. We got forty houses at seven grand. That's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I own a storage unit across the road I pay taxes on. What is the problem with getting some action here to help us? This O'Hare guy, I mean, it just sounds to me like he hates us. Just flat, and you're talking just like him.
I'm just.
Well, you're talking just like Mr. O'Hare.
Sir, in my defense, I haven't been given this information for all this stuff before.
Well, I mean, do we look like liars?
No, sir.
But I.
That's not the issue.
What the hell?
They've just given me, they told me, find what's on there, find what I can find out, this information.
Let me correct something. We have not instructed him to have a view.
I I understand that.
Information that has been stolen by our highway department.
I mean, you can get both sides of the story, Michael. It ain't even lining up with the information Larry brought in here. So, you know, I I don't know. I mean, I don't know why we pay taxes for no services. I don't know why this has been a problem since ninety-one. But, you know, it's two thousand and nineteen and we're still talking about the same problems. Okay, the culvert was plugged, to his point, if it was not, we wouldn't even be sitting in here. So, you know.
That road coming down there, you drove down, you drove down. It's a dangerous road. Why? Because there's no guardrail. This plan is going to put a guardrail. There's no guardrail.
They put signs up five miles an hour, but there's no guardrail. And it's funny that the mailman's not supposed to drive down that hill. I I see him driving down that hill.
Well, it is interesting. I mean, we definitely have correspondence here.
There's mailboxes on the road, so obviously the mail is being delivered there because the guy that lived in the third house used to live there year round. Maybe it is now. I didn't do it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
What it comes down to is through these years, we've started from seventy-five to the nineties and all this, and whether it's county responsibility or not to maintain these roads, because you guys don't have the normal, like they put, say you put a housing development in and there would be a plan and all the roads and all the culverts and all the utilities. Well, you guys haven't been developed that way. You've been developed over all these years and they add in a house, then add in a road, and Kenny Branda does it and if it's something.
The roads were put in on day one when they started moving dirt.
They may, well, some of them have, some of them haven't. The thing is, is what I'm saying is, is.
Well, they were all in.
They were all there. Well, then.
Now, I will say Post Rock came later because it was on water wells out there. That's why the the picture there with the water line, what, that's the old water line that's been abandoned. Post Rock is in the center of the road.
But they did that after the fact, is what you're saying. They actually.
But anyway, I grew up out there from nineteen seventy-four on. The roads were there. I rode every three wheeler, four wheeler on them. I've been up and down every hill. The roads were there from day one.
Were they maintained by the county?
They started maintaining them in ninety-one when the homeowners came over here and we worked out this deal.
But minimum maintenance or full maintenance? Are they grading once a month?
Even minimum maintenance, though, doesn't mean that you can let the ditches fill and the culverts fill. I mean, that.
Well, half our county's ditches are full, culverts are full, not just up there.
County, you're got.
You know, we got that problem. And we're not trying to shirk our responsibility or not. It's just that I'm, I personally don't know if if responsibility lies with county or not. And that's where I'm at, because the county attorney looked into it and you can say maybe she has a conflict with me, I don't know. I'm just saying that's where I'm at.
So then where do you want to go for a source? Because it's up to us to make a decision. We have a lie. We have an opinion. We have a four page opinion by the county attorney that on page one says we're not liable and on page four says we are.
Right, that's the problem. That's the problem. One place it says we're not liable, next place it says we are liable, next place says we're not. So I'm going, what the hell are we, liable or not?
And are we trusting that source or are we going to find a new source?
Let me interject this.
Okay.
The attorney general says it is your responsibility in about four places in here. And and the conclusion, it is your responsibility. Now, I've been commissioned long enough to know I don't like some attorney general opinions, but unless you overturn that, you will never win a lawsuit. Never.
Right, so.
And so if you can overturn this, I talked to Norman Byard about this, Dave. If you can overturn it, great. But if you do overturn it, it will affect every county and every city that's accepted a plat now. So good luck with overturning that because I don't think it's going to happen. But if you want to try, try. If you don't get it overturned, and we do have to go to court over this, you will lose. Period. So, and this county is known nationwide because of the Neelander case, because of just the same thing. They decided they could beat the system and they didn't.
What are your comments?
It is a legal issue.
It's what?
It is a legal issue.
Yes.
And who's going to determine this? This is in the courts already in the US Supreme Court.
What is?
Who owns this land?
What's in the Supreme Court?
Who owns the land?
The Native American.
Huh?
A Native American.
Right.
Carpenter versus Murphy. We don't own this land as white people.
Well, until they bring it to court, it's not acceptable, so.
It is there.
That's neither here nor there. We.
Yes, it is.
Well, I, yes, but.
Yeah, so.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't want to make any decisions today on any of this.
That's fine.
I thank you for coming here.
That's fine.
But I I still, we have another commissioner that needs to be listened to all this. Emma, maybe we consult her county attorney again, saying he came here and brought all this up and go for better then. Because that's where I'm at. I don't, I don't.
I'm just going to leave with this idea. Either you guys make a decision, turn the roads over to us and rebate part of the taxes back, you fix the damn thing, or we go to court. Because I have to, I spent my retirement plus some to buy this place and I'm not going to have the damn road fail where I can't even get into my house. Then who's liable? I I didn't come here and spend all that money to be treated poorly. And I feel like that's what's happening here. And I'm not blaming you guys. It's a history of it.
Yeah.
And I'm not blaming you, but I feel like you've been given a lot of information and not all of it.
Well, and that's just it. That's why they haven't had me make a decision. They just told me, keep this in the back of your mind. So there was no, I came in that office, there was no one there. There's papers stacked this tall on every desk surface.
I understand.
So I'm I'm trying to figure out things, where they're at, what's going on. I've got projects that have been started, handshake agreements.
But here's the deal.
They haven't, they haven't tasked me with anything on this.
Winter's coming. We've been at this for five, six months and we need to fix it. And if we're not going to fix it, I'm going to fix it, but then I'm going to sue the hell out of somebody. Because I have to have access. I didn't spend all this money to not have a house to go to.
Hey, this is the county attorney's letter. You need to read that photograph.
Read it, but that's just the way.
Well, maybe we ought to get Branda here.
That's my suggestion to at least consult with him because he's the constructor.
Do you know his number?
I do.
Can you write it on there?
Maybe we can give it, we'll try to see if he can come to visit us and talk about this road here. Six, five, eight, seven thousand one.
And I'm not picking on road and bridge, but I tell you what, when I left this meeting and they're recorded and I heard Mr. O'Hare say that he did not give a rat's ass about those people out there at that lake, I was instantly mad.
I didn't know that.
When he sat in at an open meeting, that's how he felt about us out there and he didn't even know me? I guarantee you, we had a road and bridge foreman do that in our county, he was fired the next day. You never treat taxpayers that way.
That's not mine.
I know. But that's where my attitude is coming from.
But the bottom line is, she says, however frightened you are, you should continue the course taken by the board.
Right, but she's also saying it's the board's responsibility to decide.
But then, but she says.
Well, we now, we now have the document.
Well, I get online. I know they're, I know they're, they're a bunch of. Two point four million.
We need to talk to him. See if we can get Branda.
They have a thousand miles of roads involved.
Jim needs to. Well, we, yeah, you and I don't want to be in this situation.
Out here. They're taking a hundred thousand dollar taxes.
Then we can go from there, huh? I just said I don't understand what we're talking about.
I know. I mean.
I mean, if there was cattle up there on that hill still to this day, you'd be getting nothing out of there. Be a bunch of cows eating grass, you'd be getting.
Taxes on pasture ground.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Would you be getting eight thousand dollars for eighty acres or would you be getting eight thousand dollars for a hundred and sixty acres? No. You wouldn't be. You'd be getting four hundred bucks or whatever it is on agriculture ground. No, I'm not making it a money issue. I'm making it a common sense issue. That how long can you pull taxes out of fifty-four lots and do nothing to, for the people that own them? So I guess if you want to find out, we'll just pay our, we'll pay our taxes and we'll see how it all ends up.
We've had that talk.
And I'm not threatening you. I'm just saying that.
We've had that talk. I don't want to do that, but if nobody pays their taxes, it's going to take at least three years to have a tax and we'll face some fines, but you take that money out of your budget for three years? How you guys can operate?
Couldn't. We couldn't.
Oh gee, I don't understand what we're talking about here. A road that failed because the culvert was plugged up because the road grader man could have cleaned it out or the road and bridge people could have cleaned it out with a shovel. And now we're sitting here arguing and we're a bunch of pricks out here, excuse my language.
I don't see it that way. What I see is you have the same complaint that I've been hearing the whole time.
Because we have a lake house that we don't live in full time. I mean, I don't know what it means, but I've heard that comment fly around in here too. So.
It's just unacceptable. It's ridiculous. You're all equal and I've heard the same complaint about road maintenance all over, so.
So was that ever brought into the, to the road department that your culverts were plugged and didn't have any ditches? I mean, was before this?
No, because Mr. O'Hare doesn't like us in the first place.
So.
Because we always have to take it, I mean, we always had to take it in. If we had a problem, we had to come in.
Bring your complaint forward.
So the only, only thing I know, because it failed just as I purchased my house, or I might not have purchased it, but the doctor, I don't think, that lives just below the failure, um, I don't know what his name was, starts with an S.
Majeski.
Majeski, okay, Majeski. I talked to him right after failure. He says, I've told those guys several times this is going to fail because they won't get their ass out and clean that ditch out. And they won't do nothing about it. So now it's failed. He said, it's their problem. I said, why didn't you do something? He said, the amount of taxes I pay on this house, I'm not going to get a shovel out there and fix it. But he said, they knew and they should have been doing something. Well, I think you make a great person having court testify that they were informed, the guys running the road graders were informed that there's a problem and they should fix it.
And he has proof of that, correct?
All we'd have to do is.
I don't think you're going to have to have proof. All you gotta do is look at what happened there.
I mean, that that eternity is all on.
Documentation, you know, documentation, you've got it. You talked to a guy on the road grader. So I don't know. But when you're running a road grader and you can see that something totally plugged, what do you do?
They reported it. And now, in the last month, they reported it to me.
Here's the problem. It's what Mr. Lowland said earlier. We've got four hundred failing bridges in our county right now. If you drive down on county roads, you don't have to drive everywhere. You can just count the number of culverts that are still done that hasn't been taken care of for years. It's nobody's fault right now. It's, it, they haven't been taken care of, either lack of money, lack of manpower, whatever reason. And you guys aren't the only ones in this boat. So the, you do have a bad area out there because of the altitude change. And that makes it worse.
So this has something to do with management or maintenance? And I say that because our road and bridge department, the way it works, if you have a culvert fail and it plugged with trash out of a flood plain, if the dang thing's been plugged slowly over time and it fails, the person who graded that road is in trouble because he knew it and he wasn't turning it in. There wasn't something fixed. If you're blading that road constantly, you know what's going on. It's no different than you sweeping your dang shop out. You know if there's a problem and you fix it. So that's why we trade our road and bridge guys. If you have a failure because of lack of, you just neglecting your maintenance, doing your job, you're probably not going to be there much longer.
Right where we're at right now, though, there is no way, probably in the next twelve months, I could go around and unplug every culvert.
Yeah, I I understand, understand.
You know.
But.
We're a tribe, don't.
But had that been taken care of over the years and managed right, would we be, once again, would you be having this conversation?
No.
No.
I mean, but it hasn't, so we got to deal with.
Exactly, exactly. So we all got to deal.
But keep this, sir?
You sure can.
Thank you very much.
You have the attorney general's pen. You want to talk about?
I got that.
Okay.
Again, the commission gave you that.
Okay.
All right.
We will bring Jim up to speed and he can watch the radio. And I'm going to talk to Kenny.
Okay.
Now, with the lord is giving permission, I will speak to him and then we'll get back with you.
I apologize for my attitude, but I have a little bit of a solid thought.
We know, we are, you know.
Well, I think what everyone needs to understand is this is a continuation of the same conversation that I've had with many people who have come before the board in two and a half years. So to me, it doesn't sound like anything new.
It's the same continuation since the nineties, it sounds like. It's like what he said.
Then we'll get back to him.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I asked him, the map that they printed is the same map that's with the registered needs and it is.
It is.
Yeah, and, I mean, do we have anything indicating that the road is, because that that one letter from Michael O'Hare indicates that the road is not where the map road is, but I don't see that.
Yeah, it's talking also about the intersection over to the north where they have a big loop.
That loop, but that's not Lake Lane or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to try to get Branda.
I'll call him and see if he can come meet with us.
And we'll talk to him about it too because he was doing all the work here. And we might get Kenny Branda, the guy, you know him, right?
Yeah.
And and he did a lot of the original construction out there. May get him and then have you guys in here and he can kind of say what he did and why. Maybe we'll see what we can do from there, okay? And then also get Jim up to speed on all this. Before we make any decision, Jim should be involved because it's.
That road, because it's easy, it's the quickest way to get the road.
Yeah.
Would we be able to find if we had a survey done? Was, was there a survey along with the plat? It's kind of what I was.
Not to my knowledge.
See, we had instructed the county attorney to get a bid on getting an as-built map of now. You know, we wanted to.
What Swabe was working on.
No. No. We did two different things. Even the county attorney, she sent us an email that wasn't even pertaining. We made, if you go back in the minutes, we made a motion to have her get an as-built plat so that we could compare the now to this nineteen seventy-seven. Is it seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven, seventy-six, yeah.
So we, I think it was developed in seventy-six and they signed it in seventy-seven is what it's, August something. So we wanted to compare what we have now as-built with nineteen seventy-seven and kind of see where those overlap or not overlap. She wrote back and said, you asked me to get bids bids for the landslide issue, which was not what we did. We went ahead and just asked Swabe to go out there and give us an analysis. That's why they had already been hired. And they sent us an agreement that said they wouldn't spend more than seventeen thousand dollars, et cetera. Have we gotten a bill from them yet? Okay, so at this point, that wasn't even, I mean, it was in the minutes, it was in a motion, it wasn't even done properly. So really, we still don't have, you have like some topographical just images, but we still don't have like an actual surveyed area of what is there versus what was signed on that map. And or do we even have a survey of that original nineteen seventy-seven map?
I have been in a bit, no.
Yeah.
It is.
It looks to me like that's all they presented because this agreement says that that was attached to it. And they had really, but they have all those parcels lotted off already on that map, which is interesting. Yeah. Okay, any further business to come before the board? We need to schedule something at the nursing home, which I guess we can't really do without Jim, but would you like to?
What do you mean that?
We said we would speak to them. We need to go to them. I don't think we can have any, we can't have them come here.
To who? The residents, they do?
The residents.
Just the executive sessions.
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, I almost forgot.
Well, I could, I, I don't know who I'd contact necessarily because they're all individual residents.
Yeah, but they live there full time. I'd say like the department or the nursing, do you?
I could go out and talk to them. What are we going to tell them?
Just open a door for, for us to schedule something to talk to them, but.
What are we going to tell them? I don't know if we should talk to them before you know what we're talking about.
Well, maybe they need to know that we're not. Well, maybe, they need to know that we're not going to avoid the situation, I mean, there is an expiration on the lease at some point, so.
We need to deal with that.
Yeah.
Well, I could talk to them and try to get a, I don't know if they wanna have a I don't know if they, they wanna have a whole group meeting with our thirty-some residents, do they? Maybe they do, I don't know, it'd probably be good to do that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, those who can attend, or.
I'll go out and talk to them, I'll find out who the new, what's going on out there, too, I need to find out.
And there will be some that obviously.
Yeah, I'll go out there and try to set that up, okay, we'll find out, okay?
Just start the conversation, because when Mr. Gaywoman hits back, then we can actually talk to them again. Okay, so we need, what are the topics, and?
Uh, employee, and then regarding the property, property.
Lake is fake, no?
Different property.
Okay, so, um, okay, but then we'll have to do them separately, because those aren't interrelated, let's do the employee issue first, is it, is it a health concern, is it a disciplinary action, is it a, um, personal information? We have to have a topic, we have to have a subject, remember, a subject, and then.
Employee information, yeah.
No, like, this open line is for you to say what it's about, and then the justification is when you pick the number.
Either promotion, or delegation of duties.
Employee performance?
Yeah.
Employee performance, okay. So, I move to recess into executive session, is that going to be long enough? Or?
How long?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes will be fair.
For ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing employee performance, justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, number one, matters of non-elected personnel, with the commission and the, um, road supervisor, and the director of the highway department.
Kind of.
Acting HR, do you need HR? Yes, and acting HR, county clerk. To reconvene in the, uh, commission room.
One second.
It's moved and seconded, any further discussion, questions? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we'll do ten minutes.
You can come up here, guys, if you want.
Yes, yeah, you're welcome. Okay, so, the highway department would like to fill the bridge crew foreman position, and at this time, I move to advertise a position for bridge crew foreman.
One second.
The motion been seconded to advertise for that position, which is informally being filled right now, so. Um, all, any more questions? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and I would just say, um, you should probably, either one of you of both look at the job description and make sure that you don't want anything changed before that person gets hired under that job description, just kinda maybe lay all three of them out, and see what you think.
And if you do want it added, then.
Bring it forward.
Add something to it, or change anything they wanna tell us, then we can kinda group it.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that, next.
The, you take the session regarding cost preparation for.
Okay, so that would be, may I see your sheet, because there is a section for that, do you need more than five minutes?
Probably ten, I guess, to be fair.
So, we have another request for the highway department, executive session, and I move to recess into executive session for ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing actionable issues involving county property. Justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. And that'd be number five, to discuss matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person, as a student, patient, awayman. Or resident. No, that's not, that's not what I thought it was, hold on a minute. That's not what I thought it was, a public institution.
It doesn't have to be executive, executive session if you don't want it to be adjusted.
I mean, we already kinda discussed it in open session, but I I thought there was something, and, and I missed, I was missed.
Just take one generic one.
But you can't, I mean, there isn't one, because I.
We need a generic one.
It's not an employee, but that's the point of this not being that way. I mean, it's, the person does not matter, okay, if the person isn't a resident, I'm calling it a situation. It's not a patient or provider. I guess we're not gonna do an executive session, I withdraw my mission. I just, I don't see what I thought I saw, which was adversely, favorably affecting a person, but it, it's only if that person is a part of a public institution, which is not, so I can't do it.
So these, this is talk, if you want me to submit this to.
Oh, a cost analysis of the situation where there was a culvert removed from the roadway.
Yes, missing it. What we want submitted in this direction, if there's any line item changes we want done to it.
Okay, what is a five hundred, is that a?
It's a type of pipe.
Oh, the culvert itself.
It's still existing.
That's the cost of that culvert?
That's with free shipping.
With what?
That's with free shipping.
Oh, oh, to, to replace that, to.
That's, yes, that's just the pipe itself.
Okay.
Isn't it out there, can't we use existing one?
It's in his driveway, I don't know if he cut it, or smashed it, or vented.
Well, if it, is it fine, have you looked at it?
It's in the middle of the driveway.
It's under the ground.
Under the ground, I thought it was sitting up on the driveway.
It could be, he reburied, no, he reburied it in the driveway, so I mean, we, I don't want it to go to the point where we go to pull it out, and there's big holes cut in, or it's cut in half, cause he couldn't move it all at once. So, that's, that's free shipping on that, if we wait till Friday to order it. Free delivery charge up to our shop.
Do we not have this size on stock?
No.
Is it the whole width of the road? Is that what, is it forty foot, is that what?
That's the size they sell it in, and that's, it was roughly forty foot, or thirty-one foot, but you can't buy just thirty-one feet of it, you have to buy either twenty-foot section, or forty-foot section.
So it was cut, you'd have to cut it?
We'd have to maybe possibly cut nine feet off of it.
You gotta, but it's thirty-one point twenty-two five feet, huh?
We'd have nine feet that's.
And it's.
Disposed of, really, I mean, not, not.
One, one, uh, one foot wide, that's all?
It's a twelve-inch diameter.
Twelve inches, yeah.
It, it was a piling pipe that uses culvert for a triple pipe, so the water would flow through the roadway.
Triple through there, yeah, I knew where it was.
Yes. So, we, it was used as a culvert, but it is a piece of piling pipe?
Yeah, I think this is the most appropriate, I mean, you, you're basically just saying, now we have to redo what was undone, this is gonna be the cost to us, is pretty much the number you're coming up with.
Because you can't buy just thirty-one feet, and if it is only thirty-one feet, then nine feet is basically scrapped.
You have to buy that size, and, do you have the time on there for three feet?
Yep.
Okay.
So, that's include the time from shop, starting here, job site, back to here, the time.
For the job, and the material, or the vehicles used, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't think we need an official approval, that's just.
This, uh, you gotta build this to the individual out there?
Yeah, going to turn it into his lawyer that contacted me. Didn't know if he wanted me to bring this to the lawyer first, or?
Well, I think we do need to be precise in what we're doing, because we're setting a precedent for an issue, I mean, if if someone removes a piece of county property, we won't reimburse for it, ultimately, that's what we want, is to recover our money. Um, whether or not the action is actionable, that's not up to the commission, that's up to the county attorney. So, if they wish to proceed with anything on that end, that doesn't have anything to do with us, I say we request the reimbursement. And that just be our standard practice, if we find out that something has been removed, or altered, or taken.
Do you want me to rely on the cost preparation time consideration?
No, just the total, just a, a bill with a total amount, and that's what you came up with, and I don't see any, um, astronomical amounts on there that don't add up to the project cost.
No, that's actually being very, very, very reasonable. Guys, the.
Yeah, the material itself is a third of, or over a third of the cost, I should say.
And that was using the cost that I can pull off of our star program, which may not be the most accurate, their lowest.
That's probably something you're gonna wanna set.
They're probably lower than what they should be.
Well, if you wanna do a ten percent markup or something.
No, I, I believe this would be fair.
Okay, thank you, Tony, anything else for us?
I think that would be it, Jim.
I have one thing that kinda involves them.
Yeah.
Jennifer Hill stopped and asked, "What are we doing with that house in Sylvan, the hospital that we're supposed to be destroying?"
That was like a year ago or more.
Yeah, and, um, I guess the hospital had contacted her, because now they wanna try to get it on the grant, but she thought that we said we would tear it down and dispose of it.
We did.
But she did say they don't have enough houses yet to.
On the granite?
Yes, so, I said, "Well, I'll say something, cause like the new highway department guys don't know."
Yeah, you weren't involved in that at all.
That, you're now in charge of taking down a house.
Well, they were gonna get a grant, Serene was.
It was supposed to be a fun, refreshing, a frustration project.
I tore a lot of houses down, so.
Originally, we had said no, that we would take care of it.
We did, cause we were gonna use it, because we said, "Why use up grant funds to do that when it's county property?"
At the last meeting, I went to the hospital board, Alan Serene, uh.
That's why Jennifer's confused, because she thought we were tearing it down.
Well, we were one time, but then Alan Serene at the hospital board.
Well, why are we gonna let them spend money when we know they're in a.
Well, they were gonna get a grant from Post Rock Community Foundation, I think, to pay, to just, pay to tear it down, then I think maybe we were gonna haul it off to them.
But ultimately, what she's saying is that they still need more, um, houses to qualify to get the group grant, then why not add that back in? Put them, have them put it back in, what we, what we said we would do is forgive the CD pit, um.
Landfill.
Landfill fees.
Yeah.
And then we actually said we'd take our.
Ours from down, yeah, our, our, we would take the.
We don't have an excavator, we have a wheel tree trimmer.
So, that way, they wouldn't have, they would allow more houses, but I guess apparently they have a couple of houses that they're not able to qualify.
So, yeah, so we will still.
Well, Serene was gonna do that, now maybe Jennifer should talk to him.
But I'm saying, that's them asking for more money that can be put to good use elsewhere, if they need it as part of their group.
But it was not on that, though, but community foundation money.
Hang on, Randy, let's just start all over.
Okay.
The question that Jennifer had was, why would they apply for Post Rock Community Foundation grants for something we had already agreed to do?
Because we haven't done it yet.
Because those Post Rock Community Foundation grants could go to other projects.
Exactly.
In which we've already said we were going to do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying that's what Serene said he was gonna do.
Right.
That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent.
And I'm telling you, I, my, I guarantee you, the reason why they went ahead and wanted to apply for al- alternative funding is because we haven't done it yet. It's something we promised to do last year, yeah, we'll run it over there.
Have utilities all been disconnected and removed?
Probably got asbestos in there, or this.
You'll have to ask the city, cause it, this, it is city water, I guess it's not city anything else, but, yeah.
Like, has the gas line been pulled clearly, where we can just use the excavator and pull it off, or?
I don't know.
We're gonna have to slowly stretch.
The hospital needs to take care of that, I mean, it's ultimately belonging to them.
And then you got the asbestos factor involved.
I don't know, I don't know what's in that mold, you know?
One was a bill.
Probably.
I don't know.
Was it built in the last thirty years?
Oh, no, it's not.
No, no, not.
And there's asbestos in it, there's asbestos in it.
Maybe not a hundred, but.
You're doing the tile on the floor.
Tile or insulation.
You know what I'm talking about, it's the one right next to that clinic.
It's on the west side.
That little downhill, that little downhill, where that lot is, that, that, that one, and I, it's probably built in the thirty, forty, fifties, never what I mean, or you know.
The tiles.
It's an old style, huh?
Might be in the countertops.
Yeah, so I don't know what's it made of or nothing, but Alan, I'm not saying to, uh, we should do it around Post Rock Community Foundation, I'm just saying they brought that up to the hospital board, I don't know who's gonna do it. We could still do it, I don't know.
I, I think that you guys have already approved.
We did.
That the highway department would go tear it down.
We did.
So, if that is different, then we need to say it's different.
Say it's different, yeah.
Do we have any contact information, so we can figure who was dealing with it?
Jennifer Hill, need her contact information.
Yeah, but really, it's not her responsibility, it's the hospital, we need to contact Steve Branza, the hospital.
For Alan Serene, he's on the board, he's kinda been working on it.
I agree with the thinking, the line of thinking, that why would we ask Post Rock to fund something that then we're using donation money from private donors to do something with publicly owned property? I don't agree with that inherently of like a philosophical standpoint, I don't think we should have private people donating for to take care of the public property that the taxes have already been responsible for, so. Now, if they want to add it, I guess you do need to talk to Jennifer Hill, because if you want, if they want to add it back into their total grant proposal for X amount of houses within the city, then yes.
And the transfer cost would be cloned?
I imagine it would just get thrown out anyway.
Um, well, because it doesn't qualify?
Jennifer is, is going after to rehabilitate.
They already have the grant, and originally, if I remember right, they had like nine houses, or seven, I can't remember which, but we'll just say a number. Um, and, so she originally had homes that qualified, that would fit into all of that, so we decided to remove ours from it, so that way they could have more of their taxpayers benefit from it. Now, apparently, she's struggling to get all of those houses filled, because two of the people, I think she said one of them, the taxes weren't paid on it, so it can't qualify until the taxes, taxes are paid. And they don't have the money to pay for the taxes.
But can she use the demolition to replace that, even though it was a rehabilitation, or is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that was a demolition, I think that was a demolition project.
So they can swap a demolition for a demolition?
Yes, and so she said, "Maybe we could do this, and just then have the contractor bid it out," but I'm assuming that there would be some kind of matching funds. It wasn't a hundred percent, I don't believe. She just didn't think that there was, if I understood her correctly, any sense in us, or the hospital, applying for Post Rock Community Foundation funds, when there is a grant, they do have room, we could put it on it, or we'd already agreed to do it to begin with, so.
Sorry not to add that to your list, but that was.
I feel like you guys agreed to a lot of things before it came in, and now it's all getting jumped on, I guess.
Yes, yes.
I didn't. I didn't agree to none of this stuff, but why me?
Sure.
Okay, I do believe that you were probably here, but maybe not.
I don't think so, I think it was last year, I think this was two thousand eighteen.
I'm just joking, I would, I would have.
We talked about it.
I was, I'm just joking, I, I probably went along with it. I, I mean, that's a good idea.
At least we're getting back, that was twenty eighteen, there's stuff here today that was from ninety-one and ninety-two, that the county commissioner said they're gonna do, that now it's meet up to do it in twenty nineteen.
Well, you need to bring us, bring us your list of do's and don'ts, and say what you can and cannot be capable of doing.
No, no, we can do it, it's just.
Okay, good, and juggle.
We're gonna transfer fee.
And wear a hat, a fancy hat.
Well, I have many hats, I, I have many, cause I'm the secretary, the office manager, director.
You're gonna, what?
An operator, oh, yeah, I know.
When's your new person coming in?
Fourteenth.
That's next week?
One night, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll bring them here, so Jennifer Hill, do we have a number I can contact her, or where to reach her?
City of Sylvan.
City of Sylvan.
And I can give you Alan's.
Five two six.
I don't know if we're gonna contact the hospital, uh.
I'll call her and ask her about it. Do we need, is there a date we want it torn down by? Is there a date we want it torn down by?
No, no, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to talk to Jennifer first, see if it can be back, added back into their grant package. If it cannot, have their responsibility follow on you guys, unless you feel that you can't, and then we just tell the hospital, you deal with it. Cause it's really, we were trying to help the hospital by doing this, because it is county publicly owned property, that they aren't gonna, they don't have a use for it, basically.
It's not that expensive to do unless there's asbestos in there. And if you guys are gonna waive the CD fees, then it's not a super big deal.
It's just the labor costs and equipment costs.
Right, right.
And now, if there's asbestos involved, that's a problem.
And we wanted to help out the hospital by taking care of the issue, and not using grant money, or, you know, we wanted, we said, "Save the money for the houses in Sylvan that, that qualify, we'll take care of this." But if they really are looking for more to add, then we'd see, wanna see if it qualifies, why not? Sorry, it's back and forth a few times, but. Sorry, that's back and forth a few times, but.
Well, I think it was supposed to be like a rainy day, but I still didn't have.
Okay.
A lot to do.
Yes. Brandon, I'll give you Serene's number. He's on board, he was kind of dealing with this project, so you can coordinate it with him or tell him.
No, I'll, yeah, I'll talk with Jennifer first, because it's.
Okay. Well, I'll give Serene's though, while we're here. Five two four, thirty-six eighty-one.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
I would like to follow up on Wilson Lake State's issue, which doesn't require any action from you guys. I'm gonna at least talk to Mr. Brandon, see if he'll meet with the commission. And my one concern, um, is that we find out, I mean, is there a survey, is there something, anything that indicates that the roads that are there now are not the roads that were on the map, et cetera, et cetera, so. If you find something like that with us, no, but don't.
I have found a drawing of that.
Drawing of?
One you've done here tomorrow, so I can show you the drawing that I found. I believe it's of.
The, like, before the map was accepted, the original?
It's the, what he had there, just the drawing, physical drawing part of it, and then there's markings on there from where the road actually currently is.
Someone did a survey and found it on the.
I think they just, they drew on there because the, what's plotted there and what you physically can drive it out there, its spots are completely different.
Well, that's what we had asked for from the county attorney, who has interpreted that somehow into the landslide project, but.
So there is something on that, I'm not mistaken.
We still need to, we still need some documentation on that, so I'll look at that.
Okay.
And I think what we can do then is ask her for that. She must have the documentation, because in this letter, it says the alleged road was not constructed pursuant to the plat filed in Lincoln County. So she must know something we don't know. So I'm gonna move that we get that, um, information that is critical to the whole process. So I move to have the county attorney provide documentation for her claim in the letter dated nine twenty-four nineteen that quote, this alleged road was not constructed pursuant to the plat filed in Lincoln County, end quote. I want the documentation, is what I'm saying.
Those, thanks.
So it's been moved and seconded that that information that's, that's pointed to in the letter to us, that it be provided, and we'll share that with you as soon as we get it. Or if, I mean, I'll come and look at that today if you're in the office, or if you find something else, like a survey. Any further questions? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That's the, that's their quote from the culvert. Oh, I know, Union Road. Have you had any calls or discussions or?
We discussed it in our meetings there at the shop. And it's something that we need to address. What did you have?
Mr. Wecker's peasant farm, he's got semis in and out right now, like this is part of the, I don't know what they're doing, hatching or shipping or, I don't know.
Shipping, I think.
Shipping for hunting.
So they're, yeah, so they're already grown and shipping out. So I don't know, but I have had correspondence from this particular constituent yearly, because he has a seasonal business where there's a lot of traffic. If we put on the material that is sloped, he's had to pull his own.
I know.
Deliveries out of the ditch, um, and then there is that culvert that we did agree to fix for him two years ago. It's on Union. We, he had a section, there were, there's one that we redid on thirtieth.
Okay.
By him up north, okay? And then Union goes east and west and you can see where just material, everything from this size down has just washed across, the culvert's not big enough right there, is my opinion. We already talked about this, we talked about getting one of those train boxcar, I believe, is what we talked about as a fix there.
Or whatever'd work good. Maybe two culverts he was, it's just, it's just, uh,
Yeah, what is the crossroad there?
Southeast of his house, right there on Union, it's like fiftieth, uh, or like, or it's like thirtieth, thirtieth.
Yeah, I think it's right by.
And it is, what, there's a lot of water comes from the northwest.
You can see right where, there's no mistake.
Comes through that pasture. It's, it is, that, the, sometime, obviously you got a hundred that may be.
Now, did he say something recently about Union?
Yes.
Okay.
Just this week.
Well, their complaint was, when this, that gravel in the last year or two, it's that clay stuff.
From the zac-.
And it's spending its clay stuff continually, you guys know that. Coming from the highway going west and that is still, and at one time, we talked about.
It's a little bit of a stretch on Union on the west side of one eighty-one, was the one.
We talked about maybe adding more sand and rock there, because it is a slimy clay stuff. When it rains, it is slick up top that there.
We, we have discussed this and the guys know that as soon as we get something back from APAC or whatever, got, like, I wanted to do some today, but we can't get in our sand pit today.
Okay.
Uh, it's too many to get in there. And I, that's one of them that's gonna get done.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, we, and because it gets really slick when it's wet, because it is a, there's a lot of clay material there, and I can understand his complaint, because, uh, bec- because, you know, it's a.
And we, we should be able to get some sand in this week, so it needs to be done.
Well, yeah, if you can sometime, we'll tell them, okay, yeah, thanks.
You'll be taught probably there, so.
I don't know about, sometimes roads don't rock where he needs to apply to, I don't know. You guys gotta determine when that's.
There's a lot of sand on that road.
Yeah.
And it needs.
Blended?
It needs, it, it's blended and packed down, it'd hold a lot better. The problem is, what happens whenever we get rain, a certain individual up there ruts the roads up purposefully. And then we lose our crown and the water soaks in there and it floats all the material off and it's just, if we can pack it down so where he can't, the individual, would have to try very hard to dig, to dig those trenches. I think the road would be a lot better. If we're able to mix it up and roll, grid roll it.
Grid roll it, yeah.
We might be able to get by without having to bring a lot more material.
Okay. Well, whatever you guys.
The thing is, I have to say, because I've driven that a couple of times with some of these complaints and just to see, um, a lot of, I guess the proper terminology is the radius, where you turn from road to road, you know, ninety degree and the radius there. A lot of them are not, they're not at any kind of an angle. They're kind of sloped and smushed and there's no real grade to it to make a smooth transition. So if that water is coming across the road, then some of that material is diverting it then across the road again, so you get these cross patterns of water flow instead of it going off into the ditch, because the radius would hypothetically be nice and smooth down into the ditch all along the curve. So that's something, I mean, I don't know if it's particular to each blade route, I haven't really tried to analyze it that much, but as you said, it's interesting because you can travel Union from one side of the county to the other and it's very different, just blade routes and materials, I know.
Yeah.
So some continuity there would be great.
I will probably go up there yet this afternoon and take a look at it and, because it's on, in fact, I talked to him about it this morning, we just don't have access to sand.
Okay, okay, so I can at least respond it. We know that's on the list.
And we, we can get sand.
We can get.
We can get sand, it's just, it's six forty-five a ton.
We talked earlier about the APAC deal with, yeah, I think that's funny.
Certainly, it's six forty-five a ton. We can do that today and tomorrow for that cost.
Yeah.
And those are, we need to be looking at the budget, see where we are, if they, when you get this new report, current year for gravel and, you know, where we can move some of those funds around.
And how much you'll have.
Do you have a road building question?
I, no, not like this, but at the end.
Okay.
And how much you'll have for equipment too and this year you got in next year with those line items.
Okay.
Because that's new to both of you guys and you, you, you can figure it out, but maybe we can help or I can't, I'm not.
Well, ultimately, the bottom line dollar is there, but I would like to see us structure the budget so we know where it's coming from and we can properly adjust things for next year.
Right. That's all I'm saying, yeah. So that everybody's clear, clear what's going on, that's it.
Anything else?
No, no, I don't.
Dawn, you have anything else?
Dawn, you have anything else for him?
We had a public question a call up.
Yes, is, does the county have a zoning requirement?
We don't have any zoning.
No, we do not have, no.
Cause I heard that said.
Yeah.
And the second question, does the county require a building permit?
Yes, which, that's what.
Where would you get that at?
Yeah, where do you get building permits?
We've never had one.
I've never had any out of country.
Crazers office is only for Wilson Lake Estates.
In the city of Lake.
Crazers office? But that's because that was set up in that agreement that they would have to do that for their subdivision. It, it's not countywide.
My count of farm, we don't need nobody to write.
Well, that's why I was just, I, I.
I was wondering, I was too.
I've never had, I've never had one. We just built one.
I was wondering about that too. Yeah, I know.
Right, Norman?
Right.
Okay.
I have a, I have a county commissioner present too.
Yeah, thanks for clearing that up. You're right, it's not countywide. It was pursuant to the agreement that we signed.
Now, now, city of Lake, city of Lake has any building permits, huh?
I suppose that'd be a city ordinance.
Do you know if city of Lake has building permits done, do you?
Okay, if there is no further business to come before the board, I will adjourn us until Monday, the fourteenth at ten AM.
I just wanted to clarify, you know, people keep saying that their taxes are so high.